Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Andrew will lead us in a flag salute. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come to this day, we are so grateful to be here to conduct the business of the city and to ultimately conduct your business. Today, we ask you to help us to make wise decisions. Father, that not only benefits our citizens, but also, Father, our region. We are so grateful for our first responders and for the mighty way in which you are using us as a community. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Was there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the June 4th meeting?
No.
If not, they stand approved. At this time, we have public comment, and this is for anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Commission that's not on the agenda. We'll give you five minutes, and at this time, just come up to the podium, state your name. Anyone want to speak? Guess not. Okay, thank you. All right. Six A.
Mayor and Commissioners, item six A, the governing bodies asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim July 1st, 2019, as Chief Alan Shelton Day. Chiefs here, we'd love for you to come up.
Yes.
All right, so it's not Alan Shelton Day.
He said he's coming. He said he's coming.
All right, well, do you mind if we come back to that? It'd be nice if he was here for when we do that.
I'll make the motion, though, we can approve it.
That sounds good.
I'll make the motion, we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the proclamation for Chief Alan Shelton Day, which actually is July 1st, 2019. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
The item seven A, our colleague from the city of Dodge City, Melissa McCoy, is here to present an overview of the Southwest Kansas University Center project. Melissa?
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Hello, everyone. Mayor and Commissioners, certainly want to thank Matt for the opportunity to come here today to present to you all. And of course, we've sent out a little bit of information just in advance for your review. What you see up on the screen right now is just an update letter that we'll start sending this out about once a month, and we can, we'll send that to your staff so that they can forward that on. And we'll also have it available on the Development Corporation website for just about some of the things that are happening. And we also have a, just a little brief presentation, but wanted to, wanted to touch on a couple of different things to update you. We've had quite a bit of progress since the last time that we met and appreciate all the support that we've had from Garden City, not only from the city of Garden City, but as well from Garden City Community College. I think that's what makes this, this project so great, is it is definitely a regional effort. And I will tell you that this past week, I received a call from Skyline School just outside of Pratt, from one of the superintendents there, and she had heard us speak at the superintendent's meeting out in Soblet at the service center. And so she wanted to know how they could get Pratt involved in this effort to bring more higher education opportunities. And so we were fortunate, there was a Creta meeting happening at that same time in Pratt, and Joanne Knight, our director, was there. So she had an opportunity to meet with, with the superintendent, and we're going to have a coalition meeting with them. So really, some exciting things happening. We'll go, we'll go on to the next slide. One of the things I think that's part of the focus of this is that we're really looking beyond our students that are already in the community college. And so that's the opportunity for them to start in the community college, particularly with these healthcare-based careers. And then the university center would be that opportunity for them to be able to carry that on. And what we're finding, and our makeup of our schools here in Garden City is very similar to Dodge City, similar to Liberal, that about 85% of these students aren't going on past high school or past the community college or technical school. Now, there's some great opportunities out there with those associate degrees and certificates, but a lot of these, as you know, those medical careers require more advanced degrees, and that's, to start with, that's one of the areas that, that we're focusing on. So, and also on our non-traditional adults, those folks that are already out in the workforce, they're thinking about a career change, or they're looking at different opportunities of where they can go. So we have had quite a bit of progress with Fort Hays State, with the Bachelor of Social Work cohort. Of course, right now, there's a Bachelor of Social, Social Work here in play. I think there's a number of students that are here in, in Garden and in Liberal that are in that. We just graduated a group of 12 in Dodge City a couple of weeks ago, and now we're starting that next round. So we're in kind of a different timeframe, but we have 12 students already committed for this coming fall's program, and we have another group that's interested. And so one of the things that we found is really helpful, and this is maybe where we're looking at the community coalitions, which we'll talk in a minute, that can provide some extra support, is within getting the word out, out about the programs that we already have. So what we've done in Dodge is we've had some, what they call "learn at lunches", and that's been an opportunity. In fact, Joanne's at one today with Newman University about an education program that helps paras get their education degrees to become teachers, since, since those folks already have interest in that career path, and then how do we get them there to fill those important voids that we have in our schools. And so by going out and helping, being active in that process within the community through our different organizations, part of it is just what, what folks in our community don't know. They may not be aware that these programs are available to them. So we're not only reaching out to individuals through different forms of advertising, social media marketing, but we're also reaching out directly to those employers and saying, you know, to like a, like a Genesis and saying, hey, do you have employees that would be interested in the social work program? And we've actually contacted, in that case, Julie directly to talk to her about that, or with Compass Behavioral Health. So we're looking at those individuals that are already in those career paths, but maybe don't have the degree to go on and, and fill some of those critical voids. So of course, you all have, I think, seen this slide before, but this is just talking about some of those different important programs that, that we might be looking at. The, the other piece right now that we're waiting for more information in on from Fort Hays is the Bachelor of Nursing. And so that, we're hoping to have some information on the logistics very soon. But we've received some very promising information from Fort Hays this past week. Of course, we're waiting for logistical to know for our communities what type of financial commitment. And what they asked us for were three things, and I think they're three things that are fairly easy for us to look at, and that is helping them to recruit students, which is what we're talking about with the Lunch and Learns and things, finding them that employment opportunity upon graduation, and then the other piece is scholarships. And we've just, we've been doing some investigating even into our own, the community foundations. Of course, you all have community foundation here as well. So what different opportunities are out there for scholarships that we can connect these students with? It's kind of the same thing as the program. So scholarships are out there, but a lot of times, people don't know about them or how to take advantage of them. So how can we prepare them to, to do that? So if we want to, we can go on to the, the next slide there. I would also say that how do we sustain that pool of students moving forward has a lot to do with that coalition building. And Teri Mohica McClain, a lot of you may be familiar with Teri, longtime, was a longtime Garden City resident. She continues to work with us on this project, and we feel very fortunate for that. She's been working with coalition building here in Garden City with Pioneer Health Network, with St. Catherine Hospital, and with the Finney County Live Well Coalition. And so those are, you know, you, you almost, you have a ready-made coalition that's here with that group of folks. And so she's been talking with them a lot. They've been, they've been discussing some of these different ideas and how they can also have different partnerships with the community college, with the high school system and your schools in the surrounding area. So I'm just kind of jumping ahead, and Matt's trying to figure out where I am, talking about this. We've also have some success stories when we talk about growing our own. You know, we can look, and I imagine, you know, Garden City Community College is similar, or Seward would be similar with, we know in Dodge City Community College, about 66% of their nursing students are bilingual. We currently had 30 students, as I mentioned, that were interested in the social work program. And this coming fall in Dodge City, our community college is going to start offering CNA classes to 70 students at the high school. So that's another, another great opportunity. You get those students started in high school, and then you're right there where they are, so they don't have to, to go anywhere else. And then also presenting opportunities, finding your local success stories that you have of, of students. We had a student that went through the CNA program, and then in turn went through, got, became a helicopter pilot and got his nursing degree. And so he actually flew the, the medical helicopter into the high school in Dodge City, and he had about 80 students show up. And I know I had parents come to me afterwards and say, this is something that, you know, we're, we're looking at and we're, you know, considering now. My son's really excited about this. So just making students aware of those opportunities that are out there that are really cool. So some of the, some of the factors here is identifying the students that everyone has in our communities, finding that help for funding suggestions, looking at opportunities like our community foundations and things, looking at employer sponsorships too. What can those employers do? They're, they're the ones with the critical need, which affects all of our communities and our cities, but how, how can we help those employers become aware of how they get connected to help their future employees and these students? And then also, that provides them with clinical opportunities. I will say as well that Joanne Knight's been working with the Creta organization, and there's, there's been, over the past couple of years, and there's been quite a bit of interest there. As you may have seen in the newsletter, they reached out to, we reached out to different communities about some of the funding opportunities that we have coming up. One of those is with the USDA grant, and I'm very hopeful that soon we'll be able to make an announcement about that. One is for, for continuing some staffing and making some improvements to the hub at Hennessy Hall. And the other one that's really exciting is a, is a technology grant that's quite extensive, but it not only involves Hennessy Hall and Dodge City, but it also involves the communities of Scott City, Elkhart, Tribune, Jettmoor, and St. John, that they have applied as well for funding to bring the technology that they need to their communities to be able to offer classes in a mixed blend, so that they would be able to, to join in on these things. So lots of things happening, and we can, we certainly appreciate your continued support to, to make this all a reality. And I think, of course, those are some of the grant opportunities that we've been working on of late. And so hopefully, the last, let's see, the USDA implementation grant, and then the USDA telemedicine grant, hopefully, those are things that we'll know about very soon, and we'll be giving you all an update via email about that. But I'll go ahead and open it up if you have any questions.
Melissa, what, when do you think you'll have the building up, ready to operate?
So if, if all of this comes into play with the grant funding that we're looking at USDA, we may be looking within, when about, I would say in about a year's time for that. It just depends on, on the granting process. Because essentially, what we're doing is looking at the lower level, which connects into where Newman University is, is currently at, and we'd be creating that, that 50-person classroom, and it's also can be a workspace for workforce development. And then also there, we would locate the staff person that's going to be working and helping you recruit and build coalitions throughout the region, and the Small Business Development Center staff people as well for training.
How much is your tuition going to, what are you projecting per hour?
So the tuition is going to depend on each individual university for their cost. So I don't have that specific number, but it should be something similar to what a student would generally pay if they're paying for online, online education with, through their, for example, through Fort Hays.
Okay.
And the degree granting institution is still, whatever the program is at this juncture, do you ever foresee, I mean, is this still going to be just kind of a center of bringing these degree granting institutions together versus, I think when it was first presented, maybe this is my understanding, you know, going through and trying to get accreditation from the regents, sounded like maybe you were trying to form your own regional university, but that's not the concept?
So the, so the concept would be to form a university center in which the other universities actually come and provide the degrees. It's kind of similar to a concept that we've seen in some, some other states where they have done that. So they're providing, it's governed by the Board of Regents, but then the individual university provides the courses, and the student would go through the same enrollment process with them, and then they'd receive eventually the degree from that university. Like in the case of social work, it would be with Fort Hays.
Right.
I think, we think that that's probably, to start with, is the easiest approach, since those programs are already developed and funding is already committed to those state universities. But we've also had a tremendous amount of interest from private universities. And then just recently, we've started some conversations with K-State on their global university programs, particularly in the area of financial planning and data analytics. So some areas that, some of you may remember Dr. Dwayne Dunn, who used to be at Seward County Community College, now works with that program at K-State.
Very good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Safe travels back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Shelton's back. Chief, your proclamation passed, so that's good news. If you'd like to come on up, we can read the proclamation and...
Do it live?
Yeah. I think the mayor would, and you take a picture, it'd be great, so. Between Central Station and here? Oh, okay.
All right. This proclamation reads, whereas Chief Alan Shelton first began, began working for the city of Garden City as a volunteer firefighter from 1975 to 1978, to volunteer assistant chief from 1978 to 1982, and then volunteer fire chief from 82 to 1984, before becoming the first paid fire chief in 1984. Whereas, since becoming fire chief, the department has grown from one full-time employee to a total of 38 paid employees, including three battalion chiefs, a fire marshal, six lieutenants, 26 firefighters, and administrative assistants. Whereas during this time with Garden City Fire Department, Chief Shelton has been a member of numerous committees and associations, and has received numerous accolades, including Fire Chief of the Year Award presented by the Kansas State Association of Fire Chiefs. Whereas Chief Shelton has developed a strong partnership with Garden City Community College to enhance their fire science curriculum. He has also been committed to providing quality, technical, and leadership training to his staff that will continue to benefit the department and the city. Whereas Chief Shelton will retire July 1st, 2019, after more than 44 years with the city. Whereas Chief Shelton represents the highest qualities of value in the fire services and has served his community with honor for more than four decades. Now, therefore, I, Dan Frank, as our mayor of the city of Garden City, do hereby proclaim July 1st, 2019, as Chief Alan Shelton Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for his service to the community, and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his responsibilities and duties with the city of Garden City. Sign and seal this 18th day of June, 2019. Dan Frank, as our mayor.
And for folks that are interested, the public reception for Chief Shelton for his retirement will be Friday, June 28th. Yeah, the, the public reception for Chief Shelton to celebrate his years of service and congratulate him on his retirement is 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 noon next Friday, not this coming Friday, but June 28th. So the Central Fire Station, I think we'll try to have the event in the bays, and hopefully no fire calls, or if there are, get out of the way of the trucks. But the, yeah, please join us over there, anybody in the community. Chief Shelton's impacted a lot of people. Let's see, we're ready for...
Seven B, C, D.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, we're ready for seven B through seven F are all, are all staff reports. If you've got any questions on those, we'd be glad to try to answer them. During that, I'll call your attention to the meetings of note. Of course, our agenda packet goes out on Friday, so one of the meetings we gave notice for was one that occurred yesterday, appears on that agenda. It's the joint, was the joint meeting with the city of Olcom and Finney County, held over in the Finney County Administrative Center. We covered a number of topics. I thought it was an excellent meeting, probably one of the better joint meetings topic-wise that we've, we've had, just with the collection of topics and the way they touched all three agencies. So there's a little bit of review of some stormwater issues facing the city, also kind of how that related to the Jenny Barker Road design, and a status update on where we're at on that, the, and then also how that kind of stormwater related to potentially interaction with a new round of floodplain mapping. So I think some good preliminary discussion on all of those topics. I look forward to some further discussion between the agencies on those topics. There's also a presentation on Finney County Economic Development Corporation. I did follow-up with Lana after that meeting to get a little bit more of a, nail down the projected cost or anticipated cost of acquisition. While I don't believe that's, that's final, I believe that she feels pretty certain that $200,000 is the cost of acquisition of the third street facility, upwards of $400,000 for renovation. So in total, $600,000 potentially as the ask, maybe the ask of city, maybe ask the city plus county, maybe the ask of city plus county plus private partners. But I think to provide full context to the discussion yesterday, it was important to Noah Price, and, and she provided that and asked me to share it with you. So we look forward to seeing where that discussion goes. I think maybe some direction in that regard might be helpful as well.
I would agree with that. Mayor, if I could take a moment, I, you know, this is a discussion that we have had as a priority of our community, and we've heard reports of business leaders in local economic development, how important this is. And I think, I started my comments yesterday about this center and the plan that's been proposed as trying to gauge where we are as far as our level of support and official support, and I guess I'd like to throw that out to the commission today, because I think it's time, at this juncture, after years, you're talking about this issue and recognizing that it's quite urgent for many of our families and members of our community. Are we on board with the public, public support of this project and to what end? And then I think if we can lead on this, we can help direct the other governing bodies, or encourage the other governing bodies. So I'm in support.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think we all in support of it. I, I think that, I don't know if we're ready to vote on it today.
No, absolutely, and it's not on the agenda. I think just direct, you know, the, the...
We have these discussions, and everybody kind of nods, but nobody ever officially...
Well, I think this idea of like the funding, I think that was a very important part of the whole discussion, because again, when you're going to spend that much, that, those dollars, again, these are, if we're spending them from us and from the county, those are public dollars. So what does that look like, and is this the way that we want to spend those dollars? And so I understand that support, but again, I'm not ready to, to say, hey, let's, you know, really, the funding and those kind of things, I really need more information and what that looks like. And I mean, to me, I think we've come to this point, which I think is a really good place, and now I think it's those, let's really look at the funding and how that looks and what the ask really is. And I think, I appreciate, you know, Matt really bringing it, saying, this could be a possible, but I think for me, I'd really want to understand before I would say anything else on that, so.
The, you know, there's a little bit of a, we're in a little bit of a suspended state. I have a feeling, feeling at the staff level of, okay, what, what are, what are you expecting us to do in this room on a first or third Tuesday to advance this conversation? Or are you comfortable with not, not advancing the conversation until somebody else sort of forces, forces that upon us? And so if we, you know, if we were to do something, the staff level will put it on your agenda to give some consideration, I would, it would look something along the lines of, one, I think maybe from, from a funding option standpoint, describing in detail kind of what you need to know about the funds that we send over to the county for economic development purposes, because that's one of the tools that's been talked about. So kind of a, there'd be a background briefing on, on that. There would be sort of a list of how deep do you want to invest right now? I mean, are you willing to hold up your hand if you like the funding idea, say, we want to do all 600,000 and do our, you know, have that be part of our, of helping solve this community problem? Or, or hey, we're willing to put in a portion of that if somebody else... Whatever that could be, there, like we do on other agenda items, lay out really a wide spread of alternatives, and you can pick one or pick some hybrid in between the gaps of those alternatives. And finally, kind of the finance, the financial piece, let's, you know, get a little closer to naming a number, and then that could be either a message that the commission sends back to Finney County Economic Development, potentially sends over to Finney County if it's, if you pursue the use of the, those joint funds, something like that. Now, that would be what I would envision as a next step if you want the staff to work on it. If you're like, look, this is a community policy, policy issue, let's see who else feels like they need to do the work and put a, a specific ask in front of the city commission, that's certainly a, an alternative. So I don't know that the commission needs to figure out now or soon the end answer to whatever this is, but some general, general sense of, do you want us preparing something for a future agenda for you, or kind of stay pat for a little while?
The general consensus is put it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Better to talk about it than wait, okay.
What, how many square foot is that building? Do you know?
I don't know, we can have that included in whatever we, we present and provide.
I'm just trying to do a little math here. Do you know?
It's a lot. I don't have the actual number, but...
Circumference of a circle?
Yeah.
Area.
I can tell you that the new construction that we've looked at, which is much smaller, is $600,000 to build new. So this would be a very, very good, good, I think, if we're able to accomplish all of it.
And I'll try to, I appreciate that input, and it was maybe a little more inquisitive follow-up than you'd expect from a meetings of note item, but I, I do think that was sort of a hanging, hanging element of yesterday's meeting that never...
Right, and, and just on the policy aspect, do we want this to have a public participation? Are we, as a, as a publicly funded entity, thinking that it's our role to participate in this or not, really, is my question to the commission?
Right, yeah.
I think the board is putting it up, I mean, bringing it along to, to get that input. I mean, because we, I mean, as a community, we need to decide where we're at as a community on these issues, so.
And I appreciate it can go all the way from the purchase of the building, you know, to the fully funding, but I, you know, I mean, I think at what level, but again, you know, and who else is going to be involved, I think those are the beginning discussions, because I think if, if it's a city-owned property, or if it's a city-run or whatever, if that's how you're going to do it, then that changes the whole discussion for me. Because a lot of the employers in town also need to be, and I know they've engaged, I mean, Lana's done a great job of engaging employers, but I'm really interested in what their participation is and what level of support they have, and are there additional options, and how can we partner?
Well, thank, thank you. I think we've got what we need to, and, you know, certainly hope that it's sooner than later as far as an upcoming agenda. I wouldn't be able to answer that right now, so, uh, just kind of stay tuned and I'll keep you posted.
We've got a public hearing, we need to open up.
Ten A, 1:30, public hearing for the governing body to consider and approve the ordinance to establish the creation of a community improvement district at 2107 East Kansas, uh, for 2107 East Kansas LLC. If approved, the ordinance number would be 2837-2019. So, the, the process would be an opening of the public hearing, allow an opportunity for, uh, input from the developer and the public, uh, closing of, and I believe staff as well, a closing of the public hearing, which then allows time for the commission to discuss if you need to, and then, um, consideration of the ordinance.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing, 1:31.
Caleb?
Okay, Caleb?
Yes, I think in your staff board, this is the, our final phases of the CID establishment for, uh, this district creation. The governing body on May 16, 2019, accepted the petition to proceed forward in the process to create the Campus in Kansas Community Improvement District. On May 7th, um, the governing body adopted a resolution number 2810, 2019, setting the public hearing for today, June 18, 2019, 1:30 for the consideration of approval of ordinance to establish the district. This is the final step for the governing body to create the CID. So, you have the, all the complete information in your packet in regards to the market feasibility report, the financial development agreements, and the ordinance to establish the Campus in Kansas CID district, and we have representatives here if you'd like to explain a little further in the public.
Matt, there's a PowerPoint.
Separate or, okay, I got you. Cool?
State your name again.
I'm Krista Chukaskey, I'm Tulsa, LA, on behalf of the developer. Thanks for having me here today. Just a reminder a little about this area, this is about 11 acres located just northeast of the intersection of Campus and Kansas Drive, just to the further northeast is the target, and then across the street is Garden City Plaza, Chalk and Center. Okay? And this area in the city's comprehensive plan has been designated for commercial development, but currently it just, sorry.
You've got the flipper.
Oh, okay.
We're not fighting each other.
Okay. Um, it's designated as commercial, there hasn't been any commercial development to date, but that's what we're hoping to change here. Here's a site plan for, that's proposed for the area, and right now, there is anticipated, anticipated to be a First National Bank, a much larger branch than what currently exists, a sort of a new headquarters building, and then approximately five or six other commercial sites. We're looking at restaurant, retail, and smaller office users. Total investment in these six or seven sites is, is expected to be a little over $30 million. And then, this is sort of where we're at in the process, just to reorient you, there was, um, an MOU back in January that sort of discussed the plan of action, what we were, would be looking for. And then the district was created in March of 2019, and the planning commission found in April that the project would be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. And then in May, the resolution was, um, passed to set a hearing for today, and that's where we're at today. And then, um, next steps would be, if all goes well, is starting the project. And I think, to answer a few questions I've gotten, I think they're hoping to start just as soon as they have demolition permits in hand, so I think everybody's really excited. And then, I know this is the CID hearing, I guess I should preface, I just did all in one presenting, all in one presentation, so. The TIF project plan, this would be the final step of the process, and the ultimate goal is to create, um, just a really nice development for the city, something that's unified, connected, connects to other areas of the city, and basically allows better connection than what could, than what currently exists from Campus and Kansas area, so. And both projects, the CID and the TIF, are proposed to be pay-as-you-go, which means the developer doesn't get paid unless it generates the revenues for the project. The CID petition would allow for an additional 1% sales tax on certain purchases made within the CID. And the reason why we're using, asking for CID in addition to TIF is that the CID statute allows for more broad uses, specifically allows for vertical development as well as infrastructure, where most of the current costs, um, that are traditionally reimbursed by TIF is infrastructure, horizontal costs. CID allows for vertical construction, which makes the project, um, a little easier to market to new tenants that are coming into the area because it gives them a little bit extra benefit. And it just makes the project financially possible. It doesn't, it almost gets there with TIF, but it doesn't quite get there without the CID as well, so. And that would also be pay-as-you-go. I'm sorry, I got it.
And this would be a 1%, anything in that area would be 1% more sales tax, right?
That's correct, and it would be the things that traditionally get sales tax, so, for example, um, if there's a restaurant that has a liquor permit, liquor sales are not subject to CID taxes, so, um, just for example. And we touched on this a little bit, but one of the reasons why we're asking for TIF and CID is, it's a really large site and we're hoping to create a really nice, connected development. It's possible that another development could be done on this site that wouldn't utilize the whole site, or that wouldn't create the level of connection that we're hoping to do here. But it's also, it's a lot of infrastructure to put in that would require being put in, and we're just looking to maximize the use of the site as much as possible.
Is that house, the existing house there on the northwest corner, is that part of yours?
Yes, it is.
So, it'll come down too?
Yep, that will be demolished and be part of the commercial development as well.
Okay.
And I've asked this at a previous hearing, but I'll just clarify, all of those buildings currently are unoccupied, is that right?
Correct, they are all unoccupied. And this just puts it into a little bit of context as well, I think it's sort of nice to see how it looks overall and how it would fit in, and I think it shows providing good connectivity between, um, between Campus and Kansas, as well as unlocking potentially additional development to the north that's not, um, owned by this developer or anything to that effect, but I think it's certainly an opportunity for somebody to come in and connect as well, so.
I appreciate that market feasibility study, I thought it was really well done and I, I thought the things that it brought out really said a lot for Garden City, but also that this is something that's very viable because, again, thinking about what you're building and how much it's costing was, with that level of investment. So, I thought the feasibility study did a good job of telling you both the pros but also the cons, that, you know, that this isn't a slam dunk, that there is a lot of work to really make this, to make this happen, so.
Yeah, I think that's true, and I think it was a great study just in terms of, I've seen other retail feasibility studies that look a little less promising than that, so I think it showed Garden City's in a great place right now, um, and there's a lot of potential for, to bring in some great new users.
Okay.
And that'll move it to the public, are you guys for questions?
Is there any, anybody in the public that would like to speak on pro or con, I guess?
We have Facebook comment.
Okay.
Can I do that?
Yeah, why don't you read?
Someone asked, how much money are you wanting to put in for only 80 spots?
Eighty spots?
No, that's for the, that's for the child care.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a good question, that's what we're going to have answered. It's everybody's question.
There's no other comments, I'll close the hearing and entertaining motion for ordinance 2837.
I move to approve ordinance 2837, establishment of the CID district for, uh, Campus and Kansas Community Improvement.
Third second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve ordinance 2837-2019 for a CID project. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We got a little time for the...
Yeah, we still got some time before two o'clock, go back up to nine A. This is the appropriation ordinance, if it would, if it is approved, it would be ordinance number 2485-2019A.
I move that we approve ordinance number 2485-2019A.
Third second?
Second.
Been moved in seconded that we approve appropriations ordinance 2485-2019A. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We've got an identified time for item 12A as well, so we'll skip over that for now. Puts us at 12B, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the bids from Atlas Electric LLC as a beacon replacement project at Garden City Regional Airport AIP Program Project 03-20-00-24-42, Rochelle.
Good afternoon. Um, so, the beacon bids were due last week and they were opened. The engineer's estimate was at 76,150, the lowest bid of Atlas Electric was, came in at $84,100, so it was above the engineer's estimate and above the City of Garden City's 2% allowance, however, it still came under the budget, the appropriate, um, projected budget for the project, sorry, I can't spit that out. Um, so, the estimate for the city cost was originally 200,000 for the entire project, so with construction cost and the engineering fees, that all comes into about 113,000, so it still meets the city's policy. So, we're asking for you to consider and approve Atlas's bid, being the low bidder of $84,100. And with this project, the total costs are in the memo for you, and again, a reminder that FAA pays 90% of this project and the City of Garden City pays 10%.
I did have one question in reading, and this was just, um, looking at the two different bids side by side and trying to compare their costs on the, on the individual items, and I appreciate the engineers going back and saying, well, this is what we account for being over our engineering bid, which they did address, and I understood that, but it, it just seemed like the individual item costs, the divergence of the estimates, um, is that just in how people define certain parts of those projects? And so, some that were included in another item, because they kind of swung both ways, one would be $200,000 more, or not 200,000, but $20,000 more in this, for this cost, and then just very divergent, another, and I thought, well, maybe they're lumping different parts of the project in different line items. Would you, is that correct in my assumption?
It is, and typically, we don't see such a great difference in line items, usually in most of our construction projects, they're pretty similar in the cost. This was just a different type of bid, that the bidders had different, um, interpretation of how much it was going to cost them, whether it was a location or, you know, even, uh, saving the beacon head for us to utilize later down the road. That cost was specifically very different between the two bidders and even the engineer's estimate, so, uh, there's not a really good answer other than what you kind of said, is basically the interpretation of the bidders was very different on this, and typically that doesn't happen on our projects.
I always appreciate staff clarifying for me because I'll make an assumption, but I never want to assume, you know, and so I'll say, this is what I think this means, but please confirm that that's correct, so thank you for entertaining me on that.
Yep, and the engineers, like you said, did provide that additional documentation of where they saw some of the differences as well.
I'll make a motion, we approve the bid from Atlas Electric LLC for the beacon replacement at the airport.
I'll second.
It's been moved in seconded that we approve Atlas Electric LLC for the beacon replacement at the airport for $84,100. And any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle. Item 12C, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the memorandum of understanding with Jet Properties LLC regarding the Southeast Community Park. Caleb?
Right, um, the, uh, Jet Properties owners a real estate west of the Southeast Community Park, where the city is interested in obtaining an easement from Jet Properties for municipal utilities to install drainage and sanitary sewer facilities and improvements. The developer is interested in, in having an extended 8-inch sanitary sewer main, including all the opportunities to the west property line of the city's real property, so the developer's real property may be served, serviced by the city sanitary sewer utility from that point on. Jet Properties will install services as their, as their property is developed. Through the MOU, the developer and the city mutually agree to enter into a future agreement to dedicate a future, the future infrastructure, including stormwater detention, retention pond to the city for future development of the developer's real property and for the use of the city as deemed appropriate. And you have a copy of that memorandum of understanding, this has been reviewed by staff and, and counsel, and we would recommend approval.
How many, is this the, how, is this the part in the yellow?
The yellow, yes, that's, that's correct.
How many houses, what?
He, he has not proposed anything at this point yet, um, as it's talking about, we're talking about, if I'll step up to the, the map, is the city, if we're developing the Southeast Community Park with the parking lot, and, uh, in order to serve, uh, get the utilities to the city's building that we're building, and be able to provide sewer service and stormwater drainage to the drainage ditch over here, we would need to obtain an easement across his property. This man, if MOU covers, um, in an MOU, that we would agree that we're okay with, uh, with that easement, he's okay with that easement, as long as, as the utilities that get extended down are extended to the property line, so that he may connect to them when he chooses to develop this property.
What's that building right at, at the south end there?
This, this building here?
Yes.
That's a, uh, an individual property owner owns that property, uh, it's just a garage, cold storage, uh, it's kind of behind western irrigation. Yes. Or north of. Nor, yeah.
I guess I've never driven down that road that far, but...
So, Caleb, is the cost of this, so we already have that built into that, into the geo-bond that we did for the Southeast Park, is that where that's coming from, or is this something that we?
As far as the funding for the park?
Right, for the, no, for the, um, the eight-inch pipe, I'm sorry.
Sewer line.
This name, the main sewer line of those?
The sewer, I believe that's part of the project is for the extension of the sewer line to, to bring down and be able to service in the park, and, uh, we're needing an easement for stormwater to get to drain the park to over, and we need to go across his property and as part of that...
To the ditch?
Yes.
To the drainage ditch, yeah.
And so, as part of that agreement is, is that there will be a detention pond in that area on his property, that would also probably tie in through there, and he would just like to make sure that the sewer line, like all our projects, extend to the property lines when, when we have developers do the same, similar projects.
I'll make a motion, we approve the memorandum of understanding with the Jet Properties LLC.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded that we approve the MOU with Jet Properties LLC. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 12D, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the detour route agreement between the city and the Secretary of Transportation for the state of Kansas regarding the US-50-83 bypass project. Sam?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. A little bit of background on this agreement, during the phase two of the bypass, uh, project, the secretary desires to detour traffic from US-50 Highway onto city streets beginning at the south US-50-83 interchange, then west on US-50 Business, which is Fulton, and then to Campus Drive, then north on Campus Drive to K-156, which is Kansas Avenue, which is, identifies the off-system detour route. That means they're using a, a road that is not on their highway system, so they are wanting to get in agreement with the city. The start time for the phase two of the construction project is scheduled for late August or early September. This will cause an increase in vehicular traffic on Kansas, or on Campus Drive. Both staffs are anticipating some surface pavement deteriorations, which will require some type of improvements to the surface of Campus Drive. For the use of Campus Drive, the secretary has agreed to pay a lump sum of 320,000, $320,795 to the city to perform a three-inch mill and... to perform a three-inch mill and inlay project on the detour route, which is Campus Drive. Now, governing body has an option to do that option, which is the mill and inlay, or if we choose to do a better reconstruction project, then the city would have to come up with those additional funds to do that type of project. Staff has attached the proposed detour route agreement for the governing body's review. The alternatives would be approve the detour agreement as written. Two would deny the detour agreement as written, or the governing body could make some just suggestions to the proposed agreement for KDOT's consideration. Staff recommends alternative one, approve the agreement as written.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agreement as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agreement with KDOT and the Secretary of Transportation for the, what is it, Phase Two of the bypass project. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
If the governing body has any questions, Ron Hall is here from KDOT if you have some questions about this project. So, just wanted you to know that. Thank you.
Big, big question. The, item E, the governing body has asked to consider and approve an employment agreement with the city manager. This, each year following evaluation, the governing body considers the employment agreement with the city manager. After this year's evaluation process concluded, the governing body provided me with information as to the sort of overall, overall target for a new compensation package. The attached agreement shows changes in the following sections of the agreement salary. Reflects a four percent increase vehicle and communications allowance. Reflects a twelve-hundred dollar increase. We've removed the travel allowance from the previous agreement, instead replaced with travel handled in much of the same manner as, or in the same manner as the rest of the workforce. And then to increase deferred compensation to the maximum allowable amount under IRS regulations. So, this overall, it represents the compensation pieces of deferred compensation salary and vehicle allowance represent a six percent increase in annualized costs. Net, it's different than that, because there's some categories that we don't use for comparison purposes, because the travel was a unique arrangement that we are now moving away from. So, the net annualized dollar impact is seventy-two ninety. So, your alternatives are to approve the agreement or not approve the agreement. While I have a desired outcome, I didn't make a recommendation.
Probably good.
I move that we approve the employment agreement as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved, we'll let him say it. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the employment agreement as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much. Item F, the governing body has asked to consider and approve the distribution of the second fifty thousand dollars of the AFAC funds as recommended by staff.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As you're aware, I was in front of you earlier this spring and asked for you to distribute the first half, which was staff recommended. They couldn't ask for more than six thousand. We did that very quickly, pushed those through. And this is the second fifty thousand, and this was handed over to the Livwell Finney County Board. And the idea was that they would really focus on prevention, and because that's what we were lacking in this grant awarding process. And so, staff, city staff had no involvement whatsoever. We turned over the applications to them and included, you would find their score sheets that they, they put together for you, and ultimately, their recommendation. Staff reviewed those and just double-checked for any errors or anything that I thought might lead us down a path that we don't want to go with this grant. And I didn't see anything, and so I would just ask that you approve their recommendations as they're written here.
I move that we approve the recommendations for the allotment of the AFAC grants.
Second. Present. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the AFAC grant for twenty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We've got five minutes.
The, are you, okay. Item G, the governing body has asked to consider and approve applicants to the golf advisory board. Jennifer?
Mayor and Commissioners, I'm filling in for Jason. We have AJGA going on and out at the golf course, so both him and Clay are tied up out there. So, I, I told him we could go ahead and move, move this forward. The golf advisory board has always struggled to get a full board, and Jason has worked really hard in recruiting members to fill these, these spots. And so, we would ask that you approve all three, so that we can move forward and, and be able to continue working on the golf course.
Four?
Oh, I'm sorry, all four.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendations to the golf advisory board as recommended.
Second.
Golf advisory board.
I'll second that. Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the slate of appointees for the golf advisory board that was recommended. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item H, the governing body has asked to consider and approve three appointments to the zoo advisory board. Kristi, or in her absence, is, I'll go ahead and take this, guys. You can walk up. All right, the, the... The zoo advisory board has three members completing terms in June. Jimmy Deal has served two three-year terms and will be stepping down from the board. Stacy Green has completed one term and is eligible to serve another three-year term. Austin Love is completing a term of service vacated by Taylor Freeburg and would be coming on for his first full three-year term if approved. Ann Case submitted an application to be considered for the available board position. Stacy Green and Austin Love have expressed the desire to continue service on the board. Your alternatives are to approve the appointment of Ann Case to the zoo advisory board for a three-year term, beginning in July 2019. Approve the reappointments of Stacy Glenn, Stacy Green and Austin Love to three-year terms, beginning in July 2019. Or you can delay one or more of these appointments until another time. The recommendation of the zoo director and the zoo advisory board is to appoint Ann Case and then the reappointment of Stacy Green and Austin Love.
I'll make a motion to approve the three appointments to the zoo advisory board as recommended.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Ann Case, Stacy Green and Austin Love to the zoo advisory board. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay.
By the time we get to, I'll read slow, it'll be close to two o'clock. Item 10B is a two o'clock public hearing for the governing body to consider and approve an ordinance which would approve the Campus in Kansas Tax Increment Financing Project Plan. As mentioned by Kristen in her presentation for the CID public hearing, this is sort of one of, one of two, two pieces currently, currently running concurrently. So, the two o'clock public hearing, Mayor, would be an opening of the public hearing, allow time for the public, staff and the developer, if they choose, to provide input. When that's exhausted, you can close the public hearing. And then at that time, the governing body can discuss further amongst yourselves, and you'd be in a position to then consider ordinance number 2838, which is the ordinance that approves and adopts the redevelopment project plan.
Open the hearing. Caleb, go ahead.
You have in your packet the complete memo and staff information in regards to this, the Campus in Kansas TIF project plan. This is the, the final phases for the creation of the TIF district. As this TIF project plan comes before you for your consideration and approval, once the public hearing is closed, if the ordinance is approved, the project plan is conceded by the governing body and development agreement will need to be executed in order to begin development. And so, in your attachments is included the project plan, the market feasibility report, financial development agreement and the TIF project plan ordinance. The alternatives are the governing body may approve the attached ordinance, governing body may approve the attached ordinance, may not approve it, or the governing body may defer action until a later date. They have conceded, they might add anything, Kristin?
I won't go through my presentation again, but I just wanted to make a note as well. If you have any specific TIF-related questions, I'm happy to answer them. And also, just note, one of the other items in the packet was a development agreement, which sort of governs the relationship between these two parties. If TIF and CID are approved, it provides a process for reimbursement when increment is available. So, just wanted to note that.
So, could you just briefly touch on Exhibit H? It's page, I don't know what page it is.
Exhibit H.
It's page forty-two or forty-three in the, on the, so, where compares the, compares the eligible costs and the CID eligible costs?
Sure.
Can you just briefly touch on that, or I don't know if we can?
It's in the, it's like two E, two and, one and two, two E, one and two, right here?
Yeah, but it's...
And further down, though?
Yeah, it's Page forty-two, yeah, Page forty-two.
Of their document, not of our PDF. Okay.
So...
Oh, I got you.
The list of TIF and CID eligible costs just sort of outlined the fact that under the CID statute, there's very broad eligibility. So, pretty much all of the costs that would be incurred with the development would be eligible under CID.
I see what that's saying, okay.
But just based on the likely increment that would be generated for one percent sales tax, I believe over twenty-two years, you're looking at maybe two million dollars total. So, even though it lists a big number...
The other document, that second one, yeah. Yeah, because that's why, I guess I was a little confused. It looked like you were saying, "Hey, we want to pay for both of these costs." And then, but now I understand, when you're saying, "So, you can choose which part you want eligible."
Right, exactly. So, you can choose whether it's...
And I asked that question too late.
It would not be double-counted in any way. You'd have to pick one or the other to get reimbursed from, so...
Okay. Any questions? Any questions from the audience about this ordinance? Not, I'll close the public hearing. So, we're, the ordinance 2838-2019.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2838-2019.
Is there a second? I'll second, I'll second. About my turn. What?
I think Commissioner Dick seconded, or...
I did.
Or you did, oh, never mind.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2838-2019 in reference to the Campus and Kansas Tax and Increment Financing Project. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay. Teresa in here.
We have that scheduled for...
Two fifteen.
Two fifteen. We could go ahead and take care of the consent agenda, which is approved with the item J-1 through four, unless you'd like to pull something off and discuss it separately?
I just, I really appreciated the Bureau of Reclamation, that there is funding available. And I think the project that they, we recently talked about, that was kind of exciting. So, I mean, I know it's, you're highlighting it, but I thought that was a really, that's, seeing that move forward or the opportunity for that to move forward could be a huge impact for our community, so... I appreciate you including that in the consent agenda, so...
Okay. You want to make that motion, approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
J-1 through four?
J-1 through four.
I second.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, J-1, two, four. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Earlier today, there was some interest expressed in taking a strategic break at some point in time. Now would be a good time if we could reconvene at two fifteen, and we'll, we'll have Teresa present the audit. Is that okay?
I bet.
Yes.
Yes.
Enterprise funds, just the major funds there. Electric, water and sewer, airport. Current assets were up on all of those, as were the total assets. In the electric fund, we actually ended with total assets of just over ninety-eight million, which is where the Dogwood investment is included. So that's about a twenty-one percent increase in that area this year. Water and sewer total assets were just over forty-two million, which was an overall increase of six and a half million, or eighteen percent. What's reflected there is just the current portion of the assets, which would not include the capital depreciable assets. Airport, not as much activity this past year. They ended the year with total assets of just shy of thirty million. Even though they didn't have a lot going on, they were still up three percent. Net position was up across the board. Thirty-six point three million net position for the electric. The water and sewers net position up seven and a half percent, ended at twenty-six point one million. And even the airport was up one point two million, ending the year with a net position of twenty-seven point eight million. Operating revenues, as you can see, were up for all areas also, which is good. And then the investments in plant, the most significant being the Dogwood investment for the electric department, which is included in the nineteen. I've been taking a look at just some of the elements within the general fund. As far as revenue in two thousand eighteen, percentage-wise, taxes do make up the largest percent, as has been in the past. Percentage-wise, all of them are just pretty consistent. The areas that you see a change are maybe one percent or less. Most often, that's in police and municipal court, which is the black piece of the pie there that Kristen's pointing to. And then the transfers in, the mustard-colored slice of the pie. That will vary depending on what transfers you make.
What is that?
It'll be your transfers to reserve funds, for the most part. Well, I misspoke there, Dan. It would be your transfers in are usually the transfers coming in from utility funds. Transfers out are usually to the reserve funds. Since the largest piece of the pie there is the taxes, we broke that down on the next graph. And you can see here, sales tax makes up almost seventy-three percent of the total tax dollars. That is actually down a couple percentage points this year from the prior year. So as a result, property tax was up just a little bit percentage-wise. And it's interesting to note, though, if you go back, the statistics has ten-year history and trend. Well, looking back ten years here, property taxes here are actually down three percent from where it was ten years ago. Sales tax is up four percent. So that's good. And you'll see that reflected when we look at the dollars on the next graph. That top line is the sales tax. And from two thousand nine through two thousand eighteen, you see an increase there. Sales tax, retail sales have been up in that ten-year period, one hundred and fifty-five million, which equates to about a three-point-eight-million-dollar increase in the sales tax revenue that the city's experienced. The bottom line is the property tax, which does include motor vehicle taxes and recreational vehicle and those other ones. It's been pretty flat over that ten-year period. The increases you do see in the dollars are largely due to the increases the city has experienced in valuation. So the actual mill levy, and there's a, on page one fifty-two and one fifty-three of the report, is actually the mill levy history of the city for the last ten years. But when you look, the actual mill levy has gone down. It's averaged about a quarter of a mill change per year, but some of those changes have been decreases in tax levies. So that overall, the ten-year average is thirty-seven point eight-six mills. The last year, two thousand eighteen's mill levy, was thirty-seven point four-three mills. So that was actually a decrease. Probably not very many cities have the ability to make that. So congratulations again to you. We'll look at some other graph comparisons on taxes here at the end. But continuing on with the general fund, as far as their expenditures, percentage-wise here in two thousand eighteen, really, the percentages just do not change. Here, from this year to last year, they're pretty much the same. If they do vary, it's one or two percentages. And looking back to two thousand nine, there again, it was very similar. So just pretty even keel. Now, dollar-wise, a little bit of change as activity and growth in the community. Some increases there in police and municipal court in most recent years, as you've added The increases in the cemetery, park, and zoo area in the last couple of years, that went up, both as a result of the ice storm and all the cleanup the park area had to do a year, a couple of years ago. And then that also happened to be the same time they took back over running the big pool. And you're all familiar with that. Otherwise, most of them have stayed pretty consistent. Capital improvements will vary based on what projects you've got going on internally that you fund through the general fund. Then looking overall, at the city's revenue and expenditures over the last ten years, it's really nice to be able to say there's only two of those ten years where the revenues were less than the expenditures, and that was in two thousand twelve and two thousand seventeen. And even in those years, they were not significant changes. So by managing those expenditures and keeping the revenues, you're maintaining the cash balance in the general fund, which certainly helps make it a lot easier to maintain that mill levy on a constant basis, as you have been. As far as expenditures of federal awards this year, this is the first year, in my memory, that the city has not been subject to a single audit. The cutoff level for federal expenditures, making that determination, is seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand now. And the city fell just underneath that benchmark, largely a result of not having any major AIP projects going on. Typically, as you see there, the red bar is the transportation area, and usually CIP or AIP, Tiger and FAA grants are going into there. So not having that made a big difference this year. So that's kind of the highlights out of your financials. When you have a chance to look at them more in detail, feel free to holler at myself or Kristen, we're more than happy to sit down and look at any questions you might have. Some other information, we always try to put together for you as we gather the information from the lead municipalities on an annual basis from their tax comparisons. Taking that information and comparing the two thousand eighteen tax levies that are being used upon the two thousand nineteen budgets, we've taken the first-class cities that have populations of nineteen thousand seven fifty, odd number, I wanted to include liberal, and they showed a population decline. Going up to cities just under a hundred thousand in population, left us with fifteen cities in that category this year. Three of them dropped off as not being recognized as first-class cities anymore, and I don't know the reasoning for that. Maybe Matt and Melinda at some point might know. But we no longer have Gardner, Derby, and Hayes in this mix. But looking at assessed valuation, we're in the middle of the chart there. Unfortunately, I can't say we're in the middle of the valuations, but we were at two-hundred-and-twenty-point-four million for last year. Liberals on the low end with one hundred and twenty-six, or one hundred and twenty-point-six million. Dodge City, then a couple lines over there at one hundred and sixty-five-point-six. Fortunately, all three of us were up this last year. I would expect that's a trend we'll see again this year. The largest valuation is Lenexa. It saw an increase of ninety-one million last year. It's up eight-point-three percent. It's interesting to point out, Lenexa's population is about twice Garden City's, but their valuation is five-point-four times what we have. They had a one-point-one-nine-billion-dollar valuation. The next few graphs, I'm going to skip over fairly quickly. They deal with total debt. And if you look at their, up there, Garden City really does not have two-hundred-and-fifty million in debt, two-hundred-and-seventy-five million. From our understanding from Melinda, they're required now to report IRBs into the league, and the league is including that information in here as debt. So it's somewhat misleading, so we skip over those.
Teresa, I have a question. So maybe this will answer my question, honestly. Or maybe that will answer my question. But in that debt per capita, you know, and you see us on the far right-hand side, a fair amount above everyone else at ten. So I'm wondering how to utilize that information, if at all, from what you're saying.
I would say not at all.
How does that inform, it doesn't inform us as to how we should be thinking about our debt or taking on more debt or?
No. Because, like I said, evidently, the league is now including industrial revenue bonds, IRBs, into that total debt picture. So they're attributing to the cities debt that you should never have to make payments on. So Dairy Farmers of America's debt's in there, all the other IRBs.
So that was really, thank you for pointing that out, because I don't know how to interpret that.
I'm glad you did, because since they are in the public information, it's good that that got brought up. And then it's a matter of the population, too. And we don't feel like the population that's reported and reflected for Garden City is a hundred percent accurate under the last census, and that's what they've been basing and modifying from. If you want to skip on, Kristen, to the next one, total levy for the city. This one should be accurate.
These are our numbers, right?
These shouldn't be much better. Garden City there, where, again, we consistently kind of stay in the middle of the graph, which is not a bad thing. We're at thirty-two-point-three, or thirty-two-point-two-three-three mills for the two thousand eighteen levy a year ago. That compares to Dodge City there at forty-six-point-eight-two-eight mills, so they were almost fifteen mills higher than Garden. Liberals, the highest of the fifteen cities presented, at fifty-one-point-eight-two-seven mills. So they're almost twenty mills higher than Garden City for just the city's share.
I thought that was interesting, when you look at what their total valuation is, though, and you see Lenexa's really even having so much higher valuation, they're still loving pretty high mill.
Exactly.
Relatively.
Yeah.
So Teresa's also, so how do you, like, as far as revenue, is there a way to tell, is one of these sales revenues the other cities, or how they're generating their revenue? Because obviously, we're generating most of ours from sales tax. I'm curious about, is it an interpretation that Liberal and Dodge, because they're not generating as much sales tax?
That's going to be part of it.
That's why they have to have a higher mill levy?
And some of it's also, as far as Liberal and Dodge, I think the fact that they do not have electric utilities that they operate. And not only do we have the benefit of that utility for our utility operation and stuff and maintaining our rates, but some of those excess revenues that are generated there help fund some of the overhead costs administratively here at the city. And so Liberal and Dodge don't have that luxury, I guess you could call it. And I say that, Troy, with, that's what I hear them complain about.
Look at Mike. It's a luxury, right, Mike? Look at his smile.
And I will attribute it all to that. I know that's what I hear them complain about, but some of it may come back to management. I'm sure part of it does, but, yeah. And then, too, the tax, the mill levy, you know, one mill here does not equal one mill in Liberal's, it doesn't equal one mill in Lenexa's. So like Lindsay pointed out, where Lenexa's mill levy's not that much lower than Garden's, even though they're raising that on one-point-two-billion instead of the two-hundred-and-twenty-million we use.
What's, one mill is what, two-hundred-and-twenty?
It's based on your valuation, and here in Garden, for two thousand eight, a year ago, two thousand eighteen, when you were setting two thousand nineteen's budget, it was two-hundred-and-twenty million.
Two-hundred-and-twenty thousand?
Two-hundred, valuation was two-hundred-and-twenty million, so the mill would raise two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand.
Yeah.
And I haven't heard what's your mill levy valuation.
No, we have subtracted out the tip in our HIBs. So we're two-hundred-and-thirteen.
Okay. I wasn't sure. I'll report that to the league.
This is good night reading.
And then the last one.
The last, the last one, this graph represents what the mills for all the taxing entities as citizens within each of those cities would pay. So in two thousand eighteen, here in Garden City, we paid one hundred and fifty-nine-point-four mills. Whereas Dodge City paid one hundred and eighty-three-point-eight, and Liberal on the high end paid one hundred and ninety-three-point-six. So they were thirty-four mills higher than we were here in Garden. So keep that in mind as you're working towards your budget. You've done a great job in the past, and I'm sure you'll continue to do so. As I said, the audit went well. We appreciate all the help we get from the finance office and all the other departments. They probably are glad to see us leave. And some of them still hear from us afterwards.
I'll have them lie.
We do, we do appreciate the assistance. We can't do it without them. You wouldn't have the financial report that you have without them. So congratulations, good job today.
Thank you, good report.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So we've got one more item that's on the agenda, and that's the, to go over the budget. I'll have Melinda come on up. It is the general fund departments, as well as general fund revenue. Really, with this, you'll have kind of a complete, you will have been presented all the funds. There's still a little bit of, a little bit of work yet to do before we're ready to publish a notice of public hearing, but Melinda can kind of do that once we get through all the funds and tell you where we're at. And then we might allow a little bit of time, that if the commission already knows some budget questions or some budget tasks you'd like the staff to perform over the next couple of weeks, so that we can get you in a position to approve a budget, you'll have an opportunity to bring some of those up. So anyways, with that, I'll let Melinda take my seat.
Thanks, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I think everybody has the information that we're going to go over with in your notebooks. So this is the general fund. We're going to start out with the expenditures first. And so the first department here is the city commission. The only change we have made here is made a little bit of an increase in two thousand twenty to look at what is paid to the city commissioners in a calendar year. On July eighteenth, we will have an ordinance. If you approve this increase here for two thousand twenty, we'll have an ordinance on your July sixteenth meeting approving a new pay plan for the city commission. You have not had an increase since two thousand oh-six, two thousand six. So the total budget for the city commission with the operating expenses were at one hundred and thirty-eight thousand six ninety-eight in two thousand nineteen revised, and one hundred and sixty-eight thousand three eighty-two for two thousand twenty. In the city manager's office, we have four positions here. We have an intern, management analyst, city manager, and the assistant city manager. So you have your salaries and benefits listed there. The operating expenses going down, this budget takes care of this building, so any repairs or maintenance that goes on with the CAC comes out of this budget, along with maintenance contracts. On the next page, under new equipment office, we have an increase here in two thousand nineteen to allow for some renovations that we did upstairs here. So that brings the two thousand nineteen budget to six-twenty-nine-two-sixty-eight and six-forty-nine-seven-sixty-seven for two thousand twenty. Service and finance has twelve employees in it, so you've got your salaries and benefits listed there. We take care of part of the audit expense out of this budget. The other expense comes out of water and out of electric. On the next page, we just have some new equipment office, both years, five thousand with, that'd be computer replacements. Total budget for two thousand nineteen is nine-oh-three-four-ninety-three. Two thousand twenty is nine-twenty-one-nine-ninety-five. One-fourteen is legal services. This would be for your city attorney. We're showing in two thousand nineteen revised, one hundred and ninety-one-thousand-four-hundred, and one hundred and ninety-six-thousand-two-hundred for two thousand twenty. Municipal courts, we have six positions authorized in both years. We did move the warrants officer out of municipal court, and we're just keeping that position in the police department. They moved that person around, so we can't ever tell how much salary we're paying out of there. So they said, let's just keep it in the police department, so we removed that from this budget. So you have your salaries and benefits there. The only expenses on the next page, they do have contracts with legal court-appointed at a hundred thousand each year. So for municipal court for two thousand nineteen revised, we have five-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-two-thirty-five, and two thousand twenty, we're at five-twenty-four-sixty-eight. Is there any questions for any of the department heads that you would have so far, going through this? Nope? Okay. In human resources, we have three full-time positions, so you have their salaries and benefits there. Under maintenance contracts, we'll have a maintenance contract with a new software that we're implementing this year with NeoGov, and so it'll have a maintenance contract associated with it. That's the increase there for two thousand twenty. On the next page, under new equipment software, we made a, we had a pay plan that was requested for two thousand twenty. We decided to move that back to two thousand nineteen, and so it would be an organization-wide pay plan that would be paid for here in two thousand nineteen. That's fifty thousand there. We also have the NeoGov software. We're also doing a link between accounting and human resources with Sage Accounting. And then we also have the employment, employee engagement software that we're paying for out of here. So they've got a lot of big projects here in two thousand nineteen, but I think they're all good ones. And since the pay plan was brought up for the police department, it might be good to take a look here at doing the organization-wide this year and get it off your list of things to do. So that shows two thousand nineteen at three-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-four-zero-six, and two thousand twenty reduces it down to three-oh-five, three-hundred-and-five-thousand. Any questions for Ally on any of those projects? Information tech has seven people in it, along with their benefits. They have a lot of tech expenses that come out of that budget, as you can see, in their operating expenses. When we go in to look at the projects, this year, in new equipment, we have the blade server that we actually had to do last year out of Community Trust. So this year, this fund is paying the Community Trust fund back. We also have the equipment that was installed in this room on a loan from Community Trust, so it's twenty-six-thousand-one-fifty. And then department computers at three thousand. For two thousand twenty, we have laptops for the staff. We have the server room UPS at thirty thousand, the wireless link for the city slash cemetery at twenty-nine, the final payment on the project here in the commission room. Then there is a new project that they are proposing for two thousand twenty, and it's the fiber project, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. Is there anyone here that would like to talk about that? That, yeah, that is a link from city hall that would go south, and it would take in all of the buildings to the zoo, so.
Yes. So Clay gave me a briefing before he left, and he's unfortunately couldn't be here today. But the fiber project does replace two connections right now, and then it will add an additional four. He said it'll make the connection a lot faster for all the different city buildings to come back to this building. It'll also allow them to log remotely, log into other computers at different facilities instead of physically having to go there. It also includes one stoplight and some cameras, additional cameras throughout, so officers like can focus on the train depot and that type of stuff.
In addition to that, both the fibers that's going to go from here to the zoo will also interconnect with several of Sam's Public Works facilities, as well as the utilities facilities. So that's why we budgeted some money in our budgets for that as well. So it all ties together.
That total project is roughly three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. There's fifty thousand in the electric department and fifty thousand in solid waste. There will be a savings on our Cox communication bill by installing this fiber, so there is some savings that we will see over the course of, course of about five years.
Do we install that? Who installs?
I don't mean to speak for you, but they're going to have a contractor come in, and Dick Construction will probably do the boring under an existing contract that utilities has to put in the conduits. And then they have a contractor that will come in and actually pull that fiber from point A to point B, and make the loops where they'll make the future connections.
Is that anticipated to be completed in a year, Mike, or is, how long will it take?
Yeah, it won't take that long. Once they get started, now the boring goes really fast in the cable, they can probably have that pulled in in a matter of four or five days. So it's not as easy for me to say, we don't have to do that.
Yeah, oh, it's a two-day, two-day journey. Yeah, oh, it's a two-day, two-day journey.
So that makes the 2019 budget $884,891, and 2020, $1,131,822 with that one-time project. City prosecution has three employees in it, along with their benefits, and basically just the operating expenses here. We do have a little bit of increase in legal services with the, with Jimmy going to be gone from this department. We have to fill in. Jennifer's going to do a little bit of that, and we might have to hire some out with them. So anyway, we had a-
Don't get, yeah, don't get tickets. Yeah, after Jennifer's, don't get tickets.
Is that called all other duties as assigned?
I don't know what it is.
Yeah.
So that total budget for 2019 is $224,088, and then $216,577 for 2020. Any questions before we start on police department? Police department has several divisions. The first one is the administrative division, and what this division does is takes care of all the equipment and training for all of the employees of the police department. So you've got some pages behind the budget that are going to show you a whole lot of detail. They look like, they look like this. And so the, the items that are in orange are 2019 expenses, and the items in, in the purple are 2020. So when we get to those line items, I'll point those out to you. There's four, four full-time employees in the administrative area, along with their benefits, coming down through the expenses. We have maintenance contracts, $213,000 this year, $249,000 next year, and you will have a form in there that is like this for both years. Shows you every maintenance contract that, that the police department has. Some of them go away in 2020, and some are brand-new in 2020, so this is a good spreadsheet to look at. They do have a lot of contracts out there for all their software and all of their equipment that, that is needed. The LEC contract, that's based on square footage that we use over there for the police department. We're budgeting $200,000 both years on that. The other operating expenses, of course, repair vehicle with the fleet that they have. We have $65,000 in repairs allocated both years for repair vehicle. Training and education, $43,000 on it. You do have some detail in your information on training. They have a lot of programs that they go through throughout the year. Then, of course, we have utilities with the LEC, both years at $160,000. Gas, oil, diesel, that's a small amount here. We allocate in the patrol division the amount that they use. Coming on down in the new equipment office, other vehicle, you're going to see the detail for that information in your packets. The new equipment office for 2020 is just to replace some office equipment and then also have some dispatch supervisor furniture, total of $11,000 there. And then, new equipment other for 2020 totals $452,205. Everything in purple there. We've got an ongoing lease payment with Sun Guard, number five of seven is in 2020, that's We have TASER equipment, payment two of five of $5,500. MDT replacements, $26,000. Radar units, seven for the new vehicles, and that'd be $17,500. New equipment for seven vehicles at $80,000. We have a payment to Motorola for the body cameras and in-car cameras. This would be payment two of five for $90,000. Replacement radios at $45,000. This is on a replacement schedule. And then the vest grant match, we have it at $38,000. So that makes up your $452,000 in 2020.
I did have a question. And this, I know this is kind of up in the air, but when the graph was presenting, they talked about the take-home car project. Is that going pilot project, which it sounds like the VITOCs already kind of implement in the near future? Is that correct, Chief? So are we going to have to purchase additional vehicles? Are we going to kind of rework the fleet we have right now to be able to do that pilot?
We're purchasing the same amount of vehicles we have. We're just not going to sell seven cars.
Okay.
We're going to keep those in the fleet and test, do a pilot project with this.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, then-
Sorry to interrupt you, Melinda.
No, no, I want you to do that. It's best to do it when the question is there. New equipment other, $310,43. And 2020, we have seven vehicles that we're going to be doing a lease purchase on. One of three payments is $91,900. The Bearcat vehicle, it's number five of seven payments, it's at $44,622. And then existing leases that we currently have, the 2018 cars were $81,620. 2019 cars are $91,900. So that makes up to $310,043. And then new equipment other is basically computer replacements at $55,850, along with the air cards that go with Verizon. So that's the bulk of, of the budget here is the equipment, and everything else is pretty much people-oriented. So we have the total administrative budget in 2019 revised at $1,998,995, and 2020 at In investigations, $122, you have 11 pers, 11 people both years with benefits. There is one item that was talked about this morning that was beneficial to add into this budget, and it's $40,000 for an external audit on the evidence room to get that started that came out of the study. So we did add that in 2019, $40,000. The other items here are, are expenses that they need to, for their investigation purposes. We have $1,003,142 for 2019, and $1,041,136 for 2020. In the patrol division, we have 48 personnel located there. There was an item that came out of the study that you heard this morning of adding a lieutenant to be over the community policing. We have not included that yet. If that's something that you want to add, we still have time to do that. So that's something for you to think about and-
Didn't it be about $70,000? No?
Sixty, yes.
Sixty-seven.
Plus minus.
So what's the priority one or priority two? I can't remember.
Would you like to talk about that?
Adding the lieutenant that they recommended today for the community response. We haven't, we haven't added it into this budget, but it's something to look at.
Correct.
And we were trying to figure out what the priority number was. Was it a two? I don't think it was a one.
No, no, none of those were ones. I believe it was a two, along with, which would be consistent with the new organizational chart.
Right.
I think they would.
Definitely something to probably work on. Yeah, we probably wouldn't add it.
We need, if we're going to go with that organizational chart, that's probably something we really need to-
Place out $36,500 for 2019.
Because the position currently is vacant, so we take advantage of vacancies.
I would say let's place it in there.
Okay.
I would agree.
From the, from the survey, it looked like it was a priority. And how they talked, I mean, it's, it's a priority for our community for that, that part of our policing, and we definitely need that, that lieutenant position to help with the organizational chart. So I would say, I would say add it.
I'd rather plan for it, and then if for some reason we decide not to go with that direction, at least we've made it, we've made a plan for it.
Right.
I would agree.
We can do that.
Thank you.
We have plenty of time to get that done. So you can see the salaries and benefits here. We get a little bit in the expenses, we get a little bit of salary reimbursement from the TSA program and the CLICS grant, and the other, the larger item there is your gas, oil, diesel with the amount of cars that we have. So the total patrol budget is $4,427,68 in 2019, and we will make an adjustment. Would you like for that to start in 2019 or 2020?
For the-
For the new position.
The new position.
For 2020.
It'll probably be partial in 19.
It's hard to-
It depends on the reorder, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're midway through now.
Are we? Chief.
Realistically, probably.
I mean-
Implementing that six months later.
Probably twenty, probably 2020, I would say.
2020?
Beginning of that implemented.
Yeah, we're six months out, and I'd like to try to push things forward as quick as possible, but I think we talked to our budget analysts at the PD. I think we could, as we move forward, we could probably fit it in our 19 budget as it stands.
So you would need to make any adjustments?
I think we can make some adjustments.
So, but if we plan for it in 2020, then?
The full year.
Yeah, the full year.
Yeah.
But do we need to put something in 2019?
It sounds like they can rearrange some expenses.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, we would have to do a promotional process, so it's going to take a few months. I mean, it's going to take a little bit to go through the, the recommendations and then an assessment, so it's going to be probably toward the latter part of the year before we can get it done.
Okay. Well, then let's put it in 2020, because it sounds like the-
Some recommendations related to the promotional process, too.
Yeah.
There's kind of some things-
There are a lot of them.
We might be adding a lot to 2020.
Well, there's a scale on, so, yeah, there's-
Okay. I think we worked through that, so.
Good.
Got it.
Okay. Then we have support services. There's 30 employees in this area and their benefits, and very few operation expenses. You have a total here, 2019 revised at $2,026,036, 2020 at $2,167,931. The last department in the police is the animal control. There's two full-time positions in this area, along with their benefits. We do have a contract with the Humane Society, $215,980 this year. They did request an increase, and that's included in your 2020 amount at $237,578. The other are operating expenses for the animal shelter. For 2019, the animal control is $328,757 and $352,350, making the total police department budget for 2019 revised at $9,777,000. And for 2020, $9,770.
And we don't budget anything for the vet, medical, any of that? Is that covered under the contract? I can't remember now. I know we just went through that, but, or is it just going to pay as you go?
It's under their contract.
It's under that, thank you.
Any other questions on the police department? Neighborhood and development services. We have 12 employees in 2019. We're looking at 2020 to increase by one inspector due to some large projects going on that'll be breaking ground here later this fall. So we do have an increase of one position here. So you have your salaries and your benefits listed here. The contract that we have with Wilson and Company comes out of this department budget, and it's $275,000 both years. We have some other operating expenses listed there. On the next page, under capital outlay and new equipment, the detail is listed down below. We have $53,000 in 2019 and $222,800 in 2020. When we look at the detail for 2019, we've got the citizen survey software at $17,600, that's an annual payment. GPS annual fee, $3,200, and we need a copier, printers, and computers at nine. Material testing survey and state, $9,000, and then $2,000 for engineering software for 2019. In 2020, we're looking at the same expenses of the software, the GPS, and the copier. The one big item, which is a one-time expense, would be the comprehensive plan. That would be done in 2020. That's roughly $150,000. And then we also have the same material testing, and there is some planning survey, planning software that they're requesting at $20,000 in 2020. That would be a new item. So that brings this budget to $1,358,073 in 2019 and $1,637,443 in 2020. Caleb, would you like to get up and talk about any of the capital improvement items you have on there, mainly your comprehensive plan?
Yeah, the comprehensive plan, our comprehensive plan, what is it, 2020 plan? And we're coming up on 2020, and it's time for that to be updated and get our public input on that. We've accomplished a lot of goals that have been set up by the community when we did the, our current, and that was done in 2009. And so this would be engaging a, a planning firm to come in and engage our community. We had our last comprehensive plan, we had over 4,000 touches in participation in our comprehensive plan. We would like to see at least the same amount of participation, if not more, if we can, in the next comprehensive plan, which outlines the goals and kind of coordinates everything with the communities, all the other master plans and plans with all the other departments, so. And just kind of helps us with the growth that we're facing and what we want the community to look like in the, in the next 10 years.
And then just the new planning software, just, is that just an upgrade, or is that additional software?
This is additional new software. What we've been running into is, is a lot of everything that we do, working with design professionals on projects that come and go, and, and then those projects are redone 10 years later. We don't have a software to be able to, be able to keep track of that information so we can easily pull that information and have it available for-
Plans?
That would be like the plans, yeah, scanning the plans into so we have easy access to them. Right now, it's a chore because a lot of it has been scanned in on CDs and on, on hard drives, separate hard drives. And if you don't know what the name of it was at the time, or it's very, not the best in, in trying to search up information. And when we're on tight deadlines, whether it's an economic development or redevelopment project or something else, it's, it can be cumbersome just trying to get that information accurately and quickly for those projects. And in order to keep things going, this software would help us to be able to coordinate and pull in all of the information that we need to help, be very responsive to those requests.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is the street maintenance. We previously reviewed this when we went over the special traffic way budget, but just to refresh your mind, we have 16 employees in the street department, along with their benefits. We do have a large expense for part of the street program. $350,000 is in the general fund here. And then we also have public transportation costs, which is your city link, at $264,057 in 2020. On the next page, the material street repair includes street maintenance at $300,000 both years. It has the cost share program for sidewalk driveway at $20,000 both years. New community sidewalks at $30,000 both years. And then the public transit costs, we have the operating costs, and then in 2019, there's going to be some amenity costs to, to new places where they're going to have stops. That'd be Hager Edition and Farmland Road. So the total in the street department is $1,633,300 for 2019 and $1,643,947 for 2020. The next item, next department is parks. We have 13- We have thirteen full-time employees in parks with their salaries and benefits listed here. We do take care of the depot out of this area and there's some repairs that do need to take place at the depot. That's five-three-four-seven, oh seven. Takes care of all the grounds in the parks for the city. Welcome signs on the next page. We have tree trimming both years at twenty-five thousand, five hundred. Under commodities is your fertilizer, tree shrubs and seed, all the expenses needed to take care of your parks. Landscaping under capital outlay, ten thousand both years. Shared facilities, this is facilities that we share with the rec commission or USD four-five-seven. Those are expenses that we share with those two entities, help keep their facilities up. New equipment parks, if we go to the next page. You're gonna see in 2019, we have a skid loader buyback, buyback both years. Then a half-ton four-wheel drive pickup both years. And a bucket truck starting in 2019 with a lease payment of sixty thousand. And that's a three-year lease, so that's one of three payments. Under new equipment other, you've got your push mowers. And then one item that they would like to get started as a continuous program is fifty thousand each year for cloud-based controllers for irrigation. The CIP projects that are currently going on, we have the community park, phase one and two going on. We did have a public restroom that was proposed in the CIP, but it is not funded. And we've got Andy here and Sam, if you guys have any questions as to their budget. Would you like to talk about your program on cloud-based controllers?
That is, we have moved forward with that. In Finnick Park, we've been using grant funds in Finnick Park for this. Cloud-based, yes, it gives us the opportunity to have control of all of our controllers at some point at any device that is available to us that's connected to the internet. It also helps us run our irrigation based on evapotranspiration rates. Weather, short-term, short answer on that is for weather and things like that to help us reduce our water and that. And so we've started in Finnick Park and it, and it is in the budget this year in 2019 already. We haven't moved forward with that quite so much yet. We usually purchase stuff in the, in the fall and into the winter to get ready to install those the next year going in. Any, any questions regarding that?
You said that the restroom was a CIP project but wasn't funded.
Right.
So why is it, it's not in the budget or you put it here?
It's not funded, it's not funded in the budget. It's just a discussion topic for you.
And where was that, where was that gonna be located at?
We're talking about Rotary Park in that area. The one location there would be in the northeast corner, kind of over by the gazebo there at Rotary Park on Third Street. One of the options, so it's a long tally trail there.
That's mine.
Further south, right by, more by Guard Valley Church, east of Georgia Matthews.
Okay.
Just to add a little bit to that restroom, that's been in the CIP process for the last three years. Has made it to the top of the CIP process. As something that the community wanted, but again, it falls short every year to be funded. So just want you to know, this isn't the first year that it's been, it's probably been in there at least three years.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Total 2019 is a million, one eighty-six, six eighty-two and 2020 is a million, two thirteen, two forty-three. The next budget is the big pool budget. We have temporary seasonal here budgeted for and along with the benefits that we pay out of those salaries. Some of the larger expenses are the repair buildings at a hundred and twenty thousand both years. And then these are just operating expenses. We have to buy concessions and supplies for operations to operate the pool. So the total expenses in 2019 are four ninety-two, forty. And in 2020, four ninety-six, nine fifteen. There was a CIP project also that is not funded. And that would be if the pool remains as it is today, there would need to be coating and painting of the deep end at four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred. Any questions there or anything?
I was just looking at the building repair, a hundred and twenty thousand. That's unlike, so the very first year that we took over the pool, we budgeted that line item higher knowing that we were going in and gonna change a bunch of stuff. Last year in 2018, our hope was that we were gonna not do as much. We were just gonna try and, you know, do a few things here and there. And it was like one thing after another kept happening last year in 2018. So what was initially, I think, a hundred and forty or somewhere around there ended up doubling. Again, if we, when we went into 2019 this year, we went in with the same idea. I think we actually accomplished in 2019 the ability to not do a whole lot of things. But we held off on doing the chemical building, which is a hundred, about a hundred thousand dollars by itself. And we'd probably already surpassed, if we do that, we would already have surpassed that, that hundred and twenty. So we're just kind of holding off. And that, if we don't do that this year, like in the fall, that's something we will have to do next year because the building's gonna fall down, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next budget that we're gonna look at is the zoo budget. And they have three different divisions here. So they have the administrative budget. There's six people located, that are located in this part of the budget. That takes care of your education, personnel. So that, this takes care of their salaries and benefits here. Maintenance contracts on the Finnick Center and throughout the zoo are paid for out of this budget. You have forty-one thousand roughly both years there. On the next page, it's basically just the operating expenses of the office. And then we have computer replacements and a little bit of office equipment and radios and new equipment. So the total for the administrative side of the zoo is five hundred and fifty-three thousand, one seventy-three in 2019. Five seventy-four, two ten in 2020. The maintenance, maintenance division has six full-time employees here along with their benefits. Their expenses are repairing buildings and repairing grounds within the zoo. So you have those maintenance expenses listed there. Under their new equipment, we have a listing down below. We have, you know, bobcat attachments, rotary tiller for the tractor, we have radios. We have an ATV dump trailer. We have an ATV mini truck, fifteen thousand, that we're actually going to remove that because there's a pass, pass-me-down old pickup that they can have from another department. So they've actually taken that out of the budget. And then the compost screener at seven thousand in 2020. The total maintenance budget for 2019 is three eighty-five, seven forty-four and four twenty-five, five twenty-nine. Is there any questions there? Animal division for 2019 has seventeen personnel and they're increasing it by one in the animal keeper area with the new projects being done down there. They were gonna need one additional personnel for animal keepers. So you have the total salaries and benefits listed here. The operating expenses, we do have a contract with a veterinarian here in town, forty-three thousand, seven fifty both years. Vet and medical expenses, thirty-five thousand both years. Next page, animal feed, we went up in 2019 due to prices. So we're at one twenty-two this year, one eighteen next year. And then the new equipment listed down below. You've got a lot of smaller items, computers, radios, lockers for the staff. Cooler upgrades. And in 2020, we're going to be redoing the bear exhibit at twelve thousand. Of course, they've got the CIPs going on, the primate, the flamingo and the animal hospital. They would like to propose a generator down there at some point in time, but they didn't put it into this budget. They just want us to keep that in mind.
Has that been a big issue in the past with cooling the animals if that goes out? Or, I mean, the generator primarily for, I guess, emergency backup during...
Right.
For specific, for specific areas or for the whole zoo or just for...
So Max likes, education curator, and Don is with me. So the generator will help with things to cover larger things. So right now, we have small ones that we can move around, that you might be able to run, small heater or a small refrigerator. The big generator will keep all of the, most of the south end running, so protecting food. And we do have anywhere from eighteen to twenty-five thousand worth of food all the time.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, no, I just was wondering specifically what we, what a backup generator would be, you know.
And it would definitely help with the instantaneous, because right now, you, you have to call people in, they come in, you have your generators at the places you need, the best you can, if they cover, you try to double up. This would provide instantaneous coverage.
Okay, thank you.
What's the proposed cost of a new generator?
Seventy thousand. Are we sitting on this one?
Yeah.
That's all it's about.
Good, nice. Glad you had that.
That's not those, one of those...
Yeah, that's not a home depot area.
Yeah, you go pick up a home depot.
That's what I'm saying, how much, how much of this are we gonna run off of? Plug the city building in?
Maybe we could get one of the Jamison Energy things down there and then...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're getting punchy, it's getting late, we're getting a little...
Okay, 2019 total for the zoo is two million, one thirteen, six oh two. For 2020, we're at two million, three oh eight, nine seventy-eight. The next area is the fire department. We have the administrative part first, where we have two employees located in this area along with their benefits. In this budget, we also have, you know, like repairs to buildings, anything for the upkeep of the buildings comes out of here. And new equipment offices is just for new computers and office equipment as needed in either station. Fire operations, we have thirty-five personnel located in the operations along with their benefits. The expenses that come out of here are basically for the firefighters, for their education, physical exams. Any repairs to the equipment that are, the fire trucks comes out of here. The new equipment other and new equipment vehicle are all lease, lease purchase payments from previous years. There's really nothing. The new equipment other is bunker gear, a lot, a lot of those things that go with the firefighters expenses. And the new equipment vehicle is just lease payments. So for operations, we have three million, one twenty-two, four sixty-eight in 2019 and three million, one ninety-two, eight oh nine. Volunteers, we still budget for, we have a few volunteers that show up. So we have a total budget of a little over eight thousand both years on volunteers. And then the next item is the art station. This would be out at the airport. We fund one firefighter out of here along with benefits. Some of the larger expense here is the firefighting foam and any repairs to the equipment that's out, located at the airport. This shows a total fire department budget of three million, five forty-five, nine oh nine in 2019. And just a small increase going into 2020 at three million, six fifteen, seven ninety-two. Alan, would you like to come up and talk about anything?
If there's anything I can answer for, he'd be more happy to. In the budget, we did add three new command vehicles. And the vehicles that the command officers are using now will then be used by the personnel to respond back to the airport. So we'll continue to use that apparatus or those pickups until they have more age on them.
Okay.
I'm the ones that go to the airport and there is no equipment. It's just transportation to and from the airport, rather than to drive new vehicles back and forth.
Cemetery operations has seven full-time employees along with their benefits. And basically, all of the expenses are just for operations of the cemetery. On the next page, it'll show you, we do have tree trimming both years up there at six thousand. New equipment other is a Hustler mower at thirteen thousand, five hundred in 2020. Then we have small equipment both years at three thousand. We do have a half-ton pickup in 2019 at twenty-nine thousand. And a pull-behind turbine blower at nine thousand in 2019. In cemetery improvement, the Third Street Bellevue sidewalk, we have it ten thousand this year, twenty thousand next year. We need to repair the arches at ten thousand this year and repair the bell tower in 2020 at ten thousand. The CIP project that's currently going on that you'll be looking at bids on here real soon is the cemetery irrigation project. That has been budgeted for in the bond interest. Anything you guys need to bring up? Okay. Okay, one seven one, capital improvement. There's all kinds of stuff in here. Fireworks is the first one. And the main street program, eighty-two thousand, five hundred, 2019. And down below, we do have, we budget for development incentives in case we need funds for that purpose in 2019 and 2020. Economic development is a calculation of one mil that we pay FCEDC out of and then the balance goes to Fannie County for a joint fund. The airport road project, that's just the overlay of the asphalt, seven thousand this year, ten thousand. It also repairs potholes. Golf course building and grounds, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's a transfer both years to the golf course for their operations. Facilities maintenance, none this year, fifty thousand next year. That's for any buildings that are in the, in this administrative area, mainly the CAC. Miscellaneous takes in a lot of information. It pays for your municipal band, it pays for any sort of lobbying that you have in Topeka. It helps out with United Way with the employee programs that we fundraised with. Any sort of miscellaneous programs that we have going on. Social funding, we have funded at the same level as we did 2019 at forty-five thousand, five hundred. The calculation and the requested is three-eighths of a mil at eighty-two thousand, eight seventy-five. We proposed the same funding for 2020 as we did 2019.
And what goes into social funding, Melinda?
That would be your community programs that you, that you look at with Jennifer's group. And then also the art program.
Those are the grants.
The grants.
Creative grants.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in the community, I mean, in the capital improvement area, it's nine oh eight, one forty-seven and nine fifty-one, five hundred. That brings your total expenses in 2020 at twenty-six million, four sixty-nine, one oh three. We're proposing a cash carryover into 2021 at three point two million. Last year, that was three point one million. So that brings total expenses to twenty-nine million, six sixty-nine, one oh three. I've included downtown vision's budget, also Fannie County Economic Development budget that you previously saw at last meeting. And then the municipal band also provided their budget. They haven't had an increase in several years on that twenty-three thousand. Now that you've looked at all the expenses, do you have any questions on the expenses before we start on the revenue? before we start on the revenue? Okay. We can ask questions later too.
Yeah.
Okay, coming into 2019, uh, we carried over 6,161,404. Some of our biggest revenues are on this page. Uh, we have connecting links that we get from the state of Kansas, 75,000 both years. Consumer use tax, uh, the 1.3 million, uh, is one of those payments that was a little bit out of normal again. Uh, 2018 included, uh, 1,343, that was a, remember the payment that we got from GE at 257,000 in consumer use? This year it was 182, so we dropped that number down slightly to 1.3 million. Uh, the liquor consumption tax, this is one-third of the tax, uh, that is distributed. The other two thirds, the other two-thirds goes to, uh, fund number 29, uh, drug enforcement and fund 30, special record parks. Uh, ad valorem tax, the 3,725, uh, that is off of last year's levy. Uh, we're looking at 4.5, uh, currently in 2020 to come up with the total amount we need to cover our expenses. Uh, of course, there's ad valorem back, back taxes collected. Sales tax, uh, city sales tax, 3044. You can look at 2018 and, uh, we collected 6.6 million. We're looking at 6.395 for 2019 because of the start of the STAR bond. The STAR bond, uh, we don't, we got three months of revenue before it kicked into the district on April 1st. So we did have three months of that, so then that made the 2020 budget come down slightly also. So, but you've been accounting for that STAR bond with an expense, uh, that you transferred into Fund 53 for the downtown, you know, projects and also capital improvements, so, uh, that reduction in, in revenue should not hinder, uh, this budget. Same way with county sales tax, we had to give up a portion of that that was unobligated. Uh, so we were at 3.8 million, uh, in 2018. We're putting it at 3.775 in 2019, and then taking it down to 3.725. Motor vehicle taxes, those are all, um, estimates that we do get from the county clerk, uh, 396,000 this year, uh, for motor vehicle, 4,000 for recreational, uh, heavy duty, 1,00617 and commercial. Then cable TV franchise, uh, it was at 216 last year, we're taking it down to 205. We see that kind of, uh, coming down a little bit as far as the franchise fee is with fewer users. Uh, gas utility stays pretty constant, that's a function of weather, uh, pretty much. Uh, 509 last year, uh, we're looking at 475 both years, 2019 and 2020. Uh, the rest of these revenues located here are, are cemetery revenues, uh, for spaces. Uh, we also have gate receipts for Lee Richardson Zoo at 21,000 this year, 22,500 next year.
Hey, I have a question.
Yes?
What, the franchise fee from electric?
Uh-huh.
And why it doesn't show up here?
Uh, it'll show up here in a little bit. Um, I haven't got to that yet.
Oh.
So, as we keep going, I'll show you where that's at.
Wait for it.
Then rural fire contracts, uh, we budgeted it at 170 this year, 180 next year. Uh, municipal court fines, uh, we had a budget of a million, a little over a million dollars for 2019, we're bringing that down based on, uh, current activity, we're bringing that down to 850,000 this year.
Is that just because they're not putting as many people through or reduction of fines?
Revenues, revenue in municipal court is directly correlated to, um, tickets that are written within Garden City, so, um, that could be explained, for instance, by the fact that we've had nine to 12 positions that are, haven't, haven't been completely full, and then we have officers doing FTO with them, so we're short on the number of officers who are actually out patrolling streets or doing traffic control. They're going to calls and they're taking calls for service, but, um, our ticket numbers are down, um, significantly from where they typically have been, um, and so our concern was we didn't want revenue to be at a place where it's been and be way overstated and, and then come in and not match up with our expenses, so.
Right.
We just accounted for that as soon as we saw the, saw the decrease, which McGrath talked about a little bit this morning when you guys had your meeting, so.
Thank you.
Uh, the next page, uh, we do collect fees on those municipal court fines, so these are revenues that we collect for the state and then, uh, remit to the state those fees. Uh, we have big pool admission and concession both years. Uh, then we also go into license and permits here. Uh, one of the bigger ones is, uh, building permits, 3,400.01. Uh, we're looking at 265,000, uh, this year and next year.
Back up very quick.
Yes, yes.
It's hard to get a word in. She's just going. Uh, the, so we aren't doing swim lessons or are we doing swim lessons?
We, the city has never been the one that actually facilitates swim lessons, the rec does that, and we work out a deal where they pay a certain amount to the lifeguards and we facilitate them using the lifeguards for swim lessons.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Now.
Start back up.
No, we're good. Um, I think I got three buildings for permits there. Uh, the next page, um, interest income, we've seen some good returns on our idle funds, um, so the budget was 102,000, we, we're budgeting it at 225,000 in 2019 and 240 in 2020.
When you talk about idle funds, I've always wondered now, can those be, do there's has to be, is there a rule about how a municipality can invest those, or do they have to be?
Yes.
So they have to be safe investments like?
Uh-huh. CDs, treasury notes.
So nothing?
Right.
You spread them.
Nothing without rates.
Right, right.
Bitcoin.
Yeah, Bitcoin.
Follow under that look.
Yeah, could we do some speculative?
Our attorney just made an interesting sound. He said that.
I was just making sure, because I know that with all the idle funds we have, that could generate significant funds.
Yes.
If invested.
And we started, we started doing some overnight sweeps, which has really.
It's helped.
Brought this number up, so it's, it's worked out really good. Um, we do have facilities that we have rental income off of, 33,000 both years. Uh, we do have an, uh, auction every year where we sell stuff we don't need anymore, so you have a little bit of revenue there. Uh, reimbursement on police services, this is a contract that we have with USD 457 for the, um, support services, uh, officers, um, 275,000 this year, 280 next year. Utility funds reimbursement, 3470.07. That's the franchise fee from the electric and water and the reimbursement for administrative salaries from electric and water. Uh, so those line items and solid waste pays a franchise fee. So all of those numbers adding up in those utility funds in 2019 amounted to 4,758,650 Uh, the reimbursement from county, uh, 214,250 and 225 in, uh, 2020 is for the neighborhood and development services contract that we have with Finney County. The same goes for reimbursement Holcomb, uh, 42,000 this year, 43,500 next year. The reimbursement animal shelter, uh, 64,794, this is from Finney County for their portion of the contract with the Humane Society. Uh, there's a 10% increase in 2020 and they have agreed to that at 71,250. Then we have some miscellaneous revenue down here. Uh, the transfer health insurance reserve, uh, this is, um, a change that we have recently made. That 50,000 is going to be utilized for the organization-wide pay study, so we thought that was a good use for that, for those funds. Uh, the transfer capital improvement reserve, that is the GE money that you got on consumer use tax last year, we're gonna transfer it back in here and do a one-time project if you approve, which would be the fiber project. That would pay pretty much for the fiber project, so. And a few other one-time projects like the planning software that Kato had. We had some one-time things that we, we just feel like we can use this money on and help out with the budget. So, um, like I say, we have a cash carryover of 3.2 that we're budgeting for in 2020, that's up 100,000 from last year. And now that you've seen all of the numbers, um, just for a little recap on personnel, uh, we will add the one that you, uh, requested for the police department. The other employee adds that we did were one, was one person in the airport, uh, we've already reviewed that budget, that was in the maintenance area. Uh, there's one person as an animal keeper, and there's one person as a, uh, city inspector, so.
That we added?
Mm-hmm, that we've added positions for. So now I think, um, I'm gonna let Matt come back up here and we're gonna see if you have any discussion that you would like to have concerning, um, mill levy or valuation or any?
What do you think? What about the valuation?
Of those?
Do you have any estimates? Do you have any rumors?
From a, from a budget perspective, it looks like, and, and we'll show you some, uh, some working detail now, I guess if you want to.
Melinda?
She's put it together, um, you just understand that this is pretty early on, uh, received evaluation, uh, the, there were two pretty large projects, one was DFA and one was, um, Ranch House. Uh, both of those didn't take their first year of abate, of partial abatement under their IRB in their, in their first year of being taxed. They were taxed on a partial valuation because it was in construction, and so on December 31st, the appraiser determines the value of whatever's there at the time, and that was a partial abatement. So if you're getting a percentage abatement, in DFA's case, I think it's 70, and Ranch Houses, it's, I believe, 60. Um, the, and you're seeking maximum value for that abatement, you're not gonna take the first partial year, you're gonna wait till the first year that you're at full value and then, and begin taking it. So last year's was, uh, um, higher than this year's because of that backing out of two very large industrial additions or one industrial, one commercial addition last year. Uh, so Melinda's got a little bit of analysis just to show you, uh, well, before I get into that. So the answer is the valuation's down slightly because, um, and so when we're calculating the value of a mil, it generates a couple thousand dollars less. Now, uh, so that you can look at the trend in valuation, um, she's backed out from the 2019 valuation, uh, what those two properties were taxed at so that you can see sort of the, the line of growth, uh, more from a fiscal health standpoint. But the discussion of the moment is the budget, and the thing that drives the last calculation of the budget is what does a mil generate? And so a mil generates for the 2020 budget slightly less than it generated for the 2019 budget. And I'll have the number in front of me, but you do, so.
203.
Well, you're giving me like 12, I just don't have a little.
203.
Yes, 203.
There's that, here's 2020.
No, um, 2, 211, 211,496. Last year, we were able to use for the calculation of a mil, 213,147. Last year's 213, had there not been, uh, or had we been backing out, uh, the portion of the DFA and Ranch House IRBs, would have been 203 instead of 213, if that makes sense. So, uh, five categories, general fund, debt service, airport, rec commission, and rec commission employee benefits. All of those, using the 211,496 would require, uh, with no other changes to the budget as presented, uh, a mil, combined mil levy of 41.298. Last year's combined mil levy was 37.474. So that, there's, you know, probably, probably some work that needs to be done and kind of the discussion moving forward would be sort of what, what are the moving parts? You have mentioned some additions, uh, or at least an addition in the, in the, um, the position, uh, that was suggested in the, the management study, uh, so we'll, we'll calculate the impact of, impact of that, but if it's, you know, ballpark with benefits in that, I guess, $80,000 range, that's another third of a, another third of a mil or more. Probably around a third.
So you're gonna go back through it?
Yeah, we'll tell you, we've, we've, uh, been, been going through it a lot. I think the, uh, the expense side of things was extremely responsible, uh, this year. The, I think the departments have always done a, a really good job of presenting a, a good description of, uh, of their needs, uh, and, and still identifying, uh, some wants and some things to think about moving forward, but, uh, some very lean general fund budgets this year that didn't provide, uh, a lot of, uh, sort of low-hanging fruit when you get to this stage in the, in the budget process, frankly. Melinda's gone through, uh, and identified some, some money that can offset, we're really careful with one-time transfers, she mentioned that, um, one, one-time, one-time influx of, of cash, uh, to cover a, the, the budgetary impact of a recurring expense is not a good behavior. If we learn anything from the state budget process, we should learn that, and the, and so what we'll do is we'll go through and say, okay, well, we really don't wanna use that one-time money to pay for a new employee, because that new employee's a recurring expense, or an increase in employee benefits, because those are a recurring expense, uh, but we might use them to, uh, build a road improvement project that, you know, is projected to have a 10, 15, 20-year life cycle. Probably wouldn't use it to, to the mil and overlay, uh, expense, because again, that's recurring. Either some capital, we, wouldn't be good, because if it's got a shorter lifespan, you're just gonna be back and you don't have the revenue stream to support it. So I think we've identified about as many, uh, one-time expenses and one-time revenues that can marry up and match up, uh, as we feel appropriate at a staff level. Now, I think there might be some that you look at from a policy level and say, we're making a conscious decision that this is or is not something we're gonna do. And, uh, but, you know, based on what we've heard you say and based on what we're listening from our department directors, we, we sort of feel like we're at the end of the staff work, um, which still leaves a little bit of, more than likely, history serves, a, a little bit of financial work left, left to do, because my guess is you're probably not comfortable at the, just short of four mil increase mark.
Yeah. So I know that we don't live in a vacuum, so I'm curious, I, I understand the cities and, I mean, I, thanks for all the work and that we can, and look and have questions, but what are the other taxing entities? Do you have any?
It's a great question.
Because again, you think about property tax, a lot of people blame, I always, they always blame the city, and I'm just like, well, we're one of the taxing entities, so do you have, have they indicated the other four taxing entities?
Uh, no, that's a, that's a great question, and, yeah, we do, we do think about property tax in that, in that context, uh, not just ourselves, but, uh, you know, how if we stack our, any change on our end up with, or any savings on our end too, uh, what's that really look like to the property owner when they get their tax bill in the winter? Uh, we're the, the way we've moved our budget cycles, we're sort of the first people out of the gate. Uh, we, we arrive at this stage, I think, quicker than most, at least with the public discussion, there's always the, the analytical work in the background. Um, it, it's not uncommon. It, it, it's not uncommon to have the chief administrative officers start to have like kind of a group conversation of where's it look like you're going to land? Where's it going to look like you're going to get a feel so that we can answer that question? I mean, ultimately, we all got to wait and see where each entity lands in a public meeting, but we kind of have a good feeling. Or maybe there's a conversation like this where at the end of it, you give some direction at a budgetary target and say, hey, I don't know how we're going to get there, but budgetary target that I received at the last public meeting was whatever, one mill decrease, one mill increase, something like that. Just probably had the, today, as a matter of fact, the first of those conversations of, hey, does your group know where they're going to, where they're going to end up yet? And then each group's starting to talk about some of the budgetary pressures they're facing and, and what's coming. So I would imagine that the state and, or not the state, because of their relationship with the state, the school district and community college are, are probably looking at the same budgetary pictures that they've been looking at, at the past. Maybe a little bit of less pressure K through 12 because there's maybe more budgetary certainty in June than they've had in years, but still not absolute certainty. But the, the, the county, I've kind of kept a little bit of an ear to their budget discussions. I don't have a good feel for where that's going to land yet. We're, we're the first, we used to be the last. And it stinks being the first because you don't know. It stinks being the last because you end up being the balancing number of where the community wanted to end up at the sum total of all four agencies.
Well, I agree. It seems like, especially because we were able to keep mill flat last year, four, four and a half seems like a big jump. Yet when I look back through what's been presented as the budget and try and think about really strategically what could be cut or delayed, I mean, part of this is we have to just decide on what the operating expenses are for our organization and make a responsible budget and present that and then be able to justify it too. But I agree, four and a half is a lot to throw out there. And so sometimes it is just, let's get it down to what we would be able to tolerate. Is it two? Is it raising it to this year? I mean, and then how do we get to that point? At least that gives us a goal to shoot for and then we can be more strategic and surgical about going through the budget again from our standpoint.
I'm, I'm looking at the audit report here that kind of gives us a history of the mills as we go. I mean, there's been a big jump in the 2009, 2010 that was with the school district. There's a big, Finney County has increased a lot since 2015. So, I mean, at the same time, the city, I mean, we've gone down. So I think at some point, you can only go down so much, even with increasing cell stacks. I mean, like I said, four is a lot, but I think we probably do have to maybe consider.
A raise.
A raise.
Well, I'm, well, I think about the, you're thinking about livability and affordability of our community. So affordable housing comes up time and time and time and time again. And part of affordable housing is this idea of property taxes. I mean, all of that, insurance, property taxes, the cost of the homes. And so that's, you know, that's where I'm thinking. I mean, I, I'm not willing to say up or down, you know, at this point, but I, I think that's the hard thing is, is that knowing that this all contributes to whether or not our community is, you know, affordable and livable. So, I mean, that's the, that's the hard part about, you know, I mean, the four is, it's a lot. I mean, that would be probably unprecedented, especially for.
For us.
The city.
Yeah.
But is a correction, Shannon's looking at the historical data, you know, are we looking at some sort of correction upward that we are going to have to make? And is it, if we hold this year flat, then are we really looking at four to five absolute next year versus a more gradual increase in the same way that, you know, we still, we know that some of these expenses, we are going to have to, we have to replace some of these vehicles. We have to do, I mean, there are some maintenance issues that just have to be done. If it's not this year, it has to be next year. And, I mean, I think we can look at that, our operating expenses are our operating expenses. And then when we look at the capital expenses, maybe we could get away with delaying it a little bit longer, but then eventually it's going to come to get us, so.
I agree. I mean, there's, there's, if we're going to have to increase at some point, I mean, gradual would be much better than.
The, the big jumps, yeah, I agree. Those are.
Can't do that.
Well, and I'm not getting a chance to review the audit report. I just got it today. So, I mean, I'm, I think that's interesting you bringing that, but I didn't get a chance to review that.
Yeah.
Well, it's kind of nice to know at least kind of what everybody's thinking that we, we at least have a temperature of saying, yes, we recognize that it looks like, based on what our valuation being a little bit lower, we may have to raise it a little bit. We know that, where we, we know that's possible. It's just where are we going to shake out at what number?
Why are you saying one, Mayor? Is there a reason or?
I just, I just feel like, you know, that if we can keep it down to that level, I don't, I think we won't get criticized that much. If you, if you try to get four mills, I think with the school, college, county, I, I just don't think we can raise it that much. You just have to cut something. That's just my, my view.
I guess there's a consensus that we need to, we need to raise it as, as a, as a commission. It's where do we need to raise it is the sticking point, I guess. What if we propose, because it's not set in stone until, it's not.
We get.
Until July?
Until you publish.
Right, and that's in?
We were hoping for July sixth.
Okay.
To publish the notice of public hearing, which would mean the public hearing would take place on the twentieth.
Right. But when you publish.
You can't go up.
You can't go up.
You can't make a change, I mean, you can go up and, you can't make a change that has a net overall impact of increasing the required mills.
Right.
Or, or, or dollars, I think it is dollars required for, from property tax.
And I love to have some time for some citizens to have input also. I mean, because I, you know, I agree with you. You say that, you know, this is, if this is what we need to operate, I want to make sure also, I mean, we're elected. And so I want to make sure the citizens also feel, you know, I mean, I agree, I think the budget's extremely responsible. And, I mean, it would be very hard to cut. But then again, knowing that, you know, I mean, this is, we don't operate just as, we're operated as representatives. So I think it would be really nice to, and there's several people I would make sure.
If you ask the public, they'll say no.
Well, of course. But no, but if you.
I don't know. I don't think that's true. I think, I think people recognize, you know, there are things that we need to make this organization run, but axing two mills, axing three mills, that's, that's a big number. And generally, when you're looking at that, then you need to look at the big projects and the big ticket items. I mean, you can go through and surgically cut out 20,000 from everybody's budget here and there, but that's not really going to get us where we need to go. We need to really say, no, we're not going to move forward on, on these bigger projects, I think. I think that's the, the bigger decision. And then you can really ask people, is this worth the money? What do you think?
And when we look at the projects, this is the first, I'll tell, I'll say this more than once over the next three meetings. This is the first, this is the final act of creating the 2020 budget. It's the first act of creating the 2021 budget. So if there's a project that you're delaying to make a savings in the 2020 budget that you're making just absolutely an inevitable project for 2021, then you're not really, you're, you're not really helping yourself. You're just driving up the, because the cost, the cost of that project. Yeah, the cost of that project will go, will grow faster than, than the revenue sources that you have to pay with it and the, and the cost of money over time. So I think it's fair to look at reductions and eliminations, but I think the elimination needs to be in the context of, we're making a conscious decision. We're going to do without this thing for the foreseeable future, not just.
Till next year.
Kick it out, kick it out another 12, 18 months.
Well, if you did three mills, that's what, six, six hundred thousand plus. Twenty-nine million.
We will prepare. The discussion's been good. I mean, if you've got, I, you've got individual ideas, we will.
How much does each mill affect, like, say, a hundred thousand dollar house? How much does each mill impact that? I, I've seen the figure written out, I can't remember.
Yeah, we've got a really good presentation of somebody once, the most recent financial report. Guys, I don't, I don't have that committed to memory. So Melinda, Melinda and her staff and the communications staff have this great one-pager that's included each year in the financial report that answers that question.
Yeah, but I can't remember.
Take twelve percent of that.
While she's getting that, I'm not sure exactly what it'll look like, but we could propose a slate of changes. That's what traditionally we'll do. We can organize that in a couple of ways. It can sort of be a menu of budget changes and you can kind of go through those and collectively say yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, and see where we end up. The other way is we could go through some scenarios that say, this would be the, you know, if you have, if you want the staff recommendation on what the three mill up budget looks like, here it is. If you want the staff recommendation on the two mill up budget is what, if you want staff recommendation on one mill or even, we kind of go through and give some prioritization from a staff perspective to that menu of changes.
I certainly prefer that.
I would, I would recommend, let's look at that.
Versus, I would have, I would rather staff make those recommendations than us do the up-down on particulars that the staff's going to know more.
Well, and we can work out it from a management team together too.
But that's thirty-seven mills.
Yeah.
To take that to forty-one, that'd be four. We'd have to do the math. But it's up times this.
But we have to do that.
Yeah. At thirty-seven mills, it's six hundred and forty-five dollars for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house.
For the city's portion of the property tax.
So you're saying less than 10%? So it should be about seven hundred-ish, less than that.
But we do have to, we, we publish when? The second?
Our meeting's on the second. We were hoping to publish on the sixth.
Oh, for the sixteenth to?
Oh, yeah.
For the, okay.
That's right. The meeting's on the second and the sixteenth, not the sixteenth.
Sixteen is the.
We can, I mean, we can also.
My problem is, is that push, that. We definitely have to let you know then by the next meeting on definitely where we as a commission want to go with that.
Yeah, and if the commission isn't ready on the second, we can still meet the statutory deadlines and publish a notice of public hearing on July sixteenth.
Okay.
And then have the public hearing in August and still have that certified until.
By the twenty-fifth.
By the twenty-fifth. So you've got.
Okay.
You've got some time if you get into something where you're really, as a group, struggling on what it is. But the staff will try to, as best it can, identify some budget scenarios and then we'll also be prepared that if you're like, well, I kind of like option B, but except for this one little piece, we'll be able to.
B plus.
We'll be able to switch in and out and be able to tell you that budgetary impact so that you could, if you were wanting to be in a position to publish a notice of public hearing.
It's, sounds like, it sounds like we would like to have the recommendations kind of on two and three mill and what that would look like brought back to us. But in the meantime, we'll talk to our constituents or we'll hear from the public more than likely.
Thank you all for the work. Yeah, thank you all for the work during the budget season. It's a lot of extra, extra reading and extra analysis on your part. Appreciate those of you that have contacted staff to learn more about individual line items or projects or questions and hopefully that's been helpful to you. We'll take it back up at the next, the next meeting. We're ready to move on. Mayor, if we are, there's one thing that I would like to add or highlight under managers' report. Call your attention to the code compliance report that's in there. We've had some questions all over town, but there's a, there's a kind of a couple that are related on just code enforcement in general, enforcement of weeds. Those complaints are twofold. One, there's not enough of it. And for those that received the letters, there's too much of it. And they're the only ones kind of getting notices. That's a, that's kind of a common response. But this report is really sort of a public accountability to where all of the existing code compliance reports are out, what day they were submitted, what date we were able to do the initial investigation, when we might have provided a letter, when it was abated and, and, you know, kind of how it was abated. You all have seen some that arrived to the point where they end up on your agenda, but those are, those are very few in the nuisance of abatement stage compared to those that are taken care of by the, the property owner. The letter itself is an awareness, has the intention of an awareness of, you know, like this is out of compliance, everybody'd much rather prefer, you take, you know, you take care of it. But it's kind of step one that if you're not going to take care of it, we're beginning to set the table for what we need to be able to handle it from a city perspective. So also, when we show up, for instance, sort of in the, in the north central part of town or the northeast, north central part of town complaint was submitted by a citizen that there was property in the alley that was out of compliance. I believe there's some trash debris and high weeds. Well, we show up, it's pretty, you know, it's customary with trash, difficult to identify which property it's associated with. So we're going to provide a notice to both of the, both of the properties. And then also we will look kind of in the immediate area and those other properties that are out of compliance. And that gets a little bit of the Hatfield McCoy reaction of, everybody, everybody here is going to get a, a notice if it's out, even if the, the complaint was one. So while we don't drive up and down every street and every property looking to give nuisances, when we do show up and complain based nuisances, we will look this direction, that direction and similar, similar violations are going to be cited. The, and again, it's to create the awareness. The preference on everybody's part is the property owner takes care of it, certainly is sufficient time allowed in most instances to handle whatever the issue is. If there isn't, and those folks call into our staff, our staff has historically been willing to work with people if they show a genuine intent of, of cleaning the situation up. So that being said, nobody likes receiving those, but, and you may occasionally hear it. One of the other complaints we've gotten also in that similar area is in some trip hazards along sidewalks. Normally associate north central or northeast Garden City with being an older part of town, but it is getting to the age where there are some, for different reasons, either some sinking or some settling of some dirt or some growing of some trees, the displacement of some panels of sidewalk that's created some pretty recognizable and folks that walk up and down particularly Labrador would notice that some heaving in the sidewalks. Now, that's the responsibility of the property owner. It's something that we can enforce from a code standpoint. And so we were provided kind of a, a complaint or an alert that there was sidewalks out of compliance. And so similarly, we've gone around and I'll let, I'll let Caleb and Sam each take a piece of this, but, because it relates to both of their departments, but we will address it from a code standpoint. But then we're going to follow up in a discussion, particularly as it relates to sidewalks, because we have a program to assist in that. And so, you know, it's a part carrot, part stick. I mean, we've got the leverage of being able to enforce it under our codes, but we want to work with the property owner that they take an active role in, in improving the situation. And again, just like folks taking care of their own weeds or their own trash, it's preferable if the property owner does it. So it's worth, worth a little time to try to work that out. So we've been through that neighborhood. The complaint has been filed. We've been through that neighborhood and visited with most of the affected property owners, if not all. Sam can give us an update. And we're optimistic that folks are going to take advantage of that program and either allow us to provide some resources towards the materials if they hire the contractor or if they provide the money for the materials, we'll do the contracting with our crew. While we're up there, we're going to go ahead and take care of some, some concrete work that's the public's, public responsibility and do some improvement, I think some corners and some other areas. So I'm going to invite Caleb up first to add anything to the weed complaint statistics and the, and then I'll invite Sam up to address the sidewalks. and, uh, the, and then I'll invite Sam up to address the sidewalks, and, yeah, thanks, Caleb.
Yeah, oftentimes, the, uh, one of the biggest issues is, is that we may get only a single complaint on a single piece of property, but oftentimes, that leads to five or six, because if it's the same situation in the ice visually in that block, then we're going to talk to the, the property owners. And then oftentimes, that leads to, well, what about all the other areas in the community? And, and so it kind of balloons from there on some of these cases. And we do try to get to them in the order we receive them. So if we received 15 cases yesterday and 30 cases today, we're, we're working on the ones we received in the order that we received them, unless there's an immediate safety hazard, and we'll, those automatically get moved to the top of those lists. Just so you know how that works.
Matt did a pretty good job explaining what we do. Uh, the area is talking about Labrador and Belmont. We have two drainage pans that need to be replaced. They're both in really bad shape. We have that targeted. Matter of fact, we moved up there to start working, but because of employee issues, now they're doing potholes. And so we hope to be up there here soon. And the option they have as a property owner is, we will help them put that back. We'll supply the labor, they supply the, the material, and we'll do it for them. Or we'll work with the property owners to go through our programs. So we do the best we can to work with the property owners. We really don't like to try to force them to do it. We like them to work with us through that. Other ways that we do that is when we have a road project. As part of that road project, we identify those, those deficiencies in sidewalks and we repair that. So we can either rebuild a lot of streets and we can get, take care of sidewalks. But HR department and the public works is working together. We need to come up with a five- to 10-year plan, I believe, is what they're calling it, to identify these types of issues on our materials and collectors, and then, and then also, how do we address when we get a complaint turned in on a trip hazard or ADA? So we will be coming to you in the near future with our plan. It could require some additional funding in the future to take care of those problems. So that's what we, that's how we handle these types of complaints.
Well, I just want to say, I think that this, I, I, I think the program's great. Anybody who's walked on my street knows my sidewalk's really torn up right now, but I'm trying to fix it. So that's the, that's the thing. And it's part of being a property owner, that's part of what your responsibility is, living in the city. And I think this is a really nice approach that the city says, let's work together, let's just get it done, let's get it. Because not all cities are, are like that. I think right now, Lawrence is having a lawsuit between their city government and citizens just over sidewalk issues for this exact same thing. So let's just work together, and it's, it is a nice program, and I hope people take care, you know, take advantage of it because it's, it's for the good of everybody. And I love to see people out walking and, and kids riding their bikes and, and everything on our sidewalks, and so we want it to be safely. I feel like I should put a sign outside my house, like, under construction, like this. Way to go on contract, this will get better. Thank you, guys, thank you for-
We're ready for-
Yeah. Yeah, Commissioner reports, and there's nothing else anticipated for, uh, from staff for today's meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Andrew.
So I want to, uh, first of all, thank, um, that was a great pre-meeting and the McCarty study. And I, I know the police department underwent a lot of time and scrutiny and energy, and so, I'm hoping that, I'm believing that there's a lot of really great recommendations coming out of that. Um, I thought it was really well-done. I mean, it was so comprehensive, I don't even think we're even scratching the surface yet. But I just wanted to say thank you to the chief and also all of those in your department. I, I know it was a huge inconvenience and a lot of time, but hopefully, this is really going to make everything even better, the excellence. Um, to Chief Shelton, um, boy, I'll tell you, as that day approaches, it kind of, you get choked up, and, you know, we just really appreciate, and hoping you don't ha, you change your mind, and so, I'm just kidding. Um, also, I just wanted to mention the, uh, the joint meeting between Fannie County. I think it was one of our best meetings. I would like to see, as Matt mentioned, this is supposed to be on a quarterly basis. I think it's important we develop relationships with the county commissioners. And, and I learned a lot about some things that I was like, that I assumed I knew, and all of a sudden, you're like, well, that's very interesting. And so, and I, I do think they have a desire to work closer with us as city commissioners and to see the county overall really successful. I was excited to see Holcomb there. I was, it was too bad that the city administrator, Robyn Luken, couldn't be there. But I, I do think those meetings are valuable, I mean, building relationships, and also understanding a lot of the things that they're facing. The last thing, I'd want to thank you for the orientation you guys did last night for the new candidates. I know when you're running for office, I mean, that's, you know, there's so many unknowns and the things you don't know. I know you're preparing a pamphlet for people with signs, and I think that's important, you know, to pass out. But I'm excited about everyone who's running, not only for city commission, but really for any office, it's a lot out there. Which reminds me of all of the people for the advisory committees. I mean, that's, that's really great to see people stepping up and doing that. So thank you for overall great job. And the budget, man, that's a lot of work. So I understand, and that's, I really want to take it serious and make sure that I am not jumping prematurely and throwing out something without really thinking and being considerate of your time and energy, so.
Commissioner Burns.
Yeah, I, I would echo a lot of what Commissioner Andrew said. I, I think his point was, was right on in that I really welcome input from my constituents and the folks around, and whether it's on budget issues, whether it's on the pool. It is our job to read all of the emails, all of the comments, and we are representatives. So I, I welcome that, and I, I hope to hear more, because I think there's some really big issues here that we need to deal with. And it does feel somewhat intimidating sitting up here trying to sort through this, and you want to make the most responsible decision, and yet you realize that we all come from our own perspectives with our own, our own set of values and approach this, and, and our job as elected representatives is to search outside of that a bit, too. So email me, that's all I have. Preferably before next meeting, because this is coming down.
Mr. Cessna.
I noticed we started the street ceiling around the community. Didn't know if there were updates or if there were certain areas that you could kind of inform us that. I know they've started, but if, I know in previous years, you kind of had it, and I know they put it out on Facebook, but if there are certain areas that you could kind of inform us that they'll be doing the street ceiling on certain days, or, I don't know if you could do that or not, but that might help our community and, you know, kind of avoid those, those areas.
Currently, the contractor is probably even with the college on the west side of the college, and they're working south. So we're about through all the street work. Uh, I don't know if they got to campus and West Mary today, but we still have a couple of lanes to do there. And then as soon as we get this done, I believe they're going to do the college roads, then we're going out to the airport to hit those roads.
Okay.
And Jamie or Sam, what's the best way for somebody that's interested in staying up to date on where those crews are working? How can they best do that?
Well, on the public works side, the best way to find out where we're at at any, any time during that process is call the public works office at 276-1260.
Yes, um, Sam is really great with us communicating. We try to put that out on Facebook as soon as we hear from his department. We did post last week, and we posted on Sunday to get people heads up of lane closures and stuff like that.
Okay. And then the potholes are continuing, I see we're still battling those.
Continuing to get filled.
Yeah.
We're working on it, you'll see them turn green, I hope.
Probably the other two. Focus on the filling of them.
Yeah. I noticed, I got a postcard in the mail about becoming a census worker, and I noticed there's been a couple of big newspaper ads in there. So anybody looking to be a census taker for the 2020 census, I highly, um, recommend that you go out and apply online for that. We do need census takers in this community to help our community be counted. And then just wanted to mention, I know every year, it's that time of the year where next week we'll have fireworks going on sale. So I know, do you guys, do you guys have the pamphlets ready to go out to the fireworks stands and start going out to the community and letting everybody know? I just, um, this year probably won't be as bad as other years, because we've had so much rain, but just be mindful to be safe when you're discharging fireworks, and be mindful of the times of discharging those fireworks, if you could, please. And again, a great pre-meeting and a great meeting and a lot of good discussion that we had. But those were kind of my, my topics that I wanted to hit upon and stuff, so that's all I got.
Mr. Day.
I'd like to also thank, uh, Fire Chief Shelton for his years of service and how much he's brought to the, to the city and, and that department. Also, um, when we had the, the review with McGrath at the pre-meeting, I think we really need to recognize how important it is when we said, what's, what's different about our department than everybody else's? And it's that community work that our police department does. That's something that, that we can take pride in, and I think that's something that the police force can take pride in. And I think we, we need to make sure that we, we champion that, because I think we might be seeing some of that preventative stuff, and we're seeing the emergency calls going down, or seeing the other calls go down. A lot of that probably is due to the preventative and the community work that they do. So that's great to see. Just a general thing, I'd like to thank everybody who volunteers, just with things that they do. I mean, rural mineral leaders, just all those things that you don't get paid to do, but it makes the city work. Um, and I know most of the time when you do it, you don't even get to recognize that you do it. But, so I'd like to thank everybody who, who takes the time to volunteer their time to make the city better. And then finally, since we just, uh, were looking at the contract, I'd also like to, uh, once again, acknowledge how important, um, our city manager is and how integral and important Matt is to making this whole thing as a city work. Um, it is the linchpin in how this all works. I mean, we even, like, we were talking last night, the election orientation thing. It's just having that constant message about what Garden City is about, and being able to take that and manage the fiscal side with the, with the emotional side of a city. I mean, it's so important. So I'd also like to just take a second to just reflect on how important and how lucky we are to have such a good city manager in our city. Thank you.
Well, I thought the pre-meeting was very good, and it lasted a long time, but it was, it was, uh, some good information. And, uh, also, I want to thank Chief Shelton for his service, and, and if I need to read that again, I can, I guess, on July 1st. Yeah. What, uh, update on the, the walking path north part of town? What's, what's, where are we?
Caleb?
Go ahead.
Nothing started, right?
Yeah, the, uh, they've, they've done the bridge work, and they were planning on starting the dirt work, and we, we got a little bit of rain, and I don't think that's good.
Quite a lot known, miss, but it rained.
Anytime we want a project to go over here, that's when we, that's a great, but they're moving right ahead. They'll, uh, later on this, uh, Thursday is their planning on, uh, continue on with the project, and it's, uh-
Who is it? Who's doing that?
A, AIPAC.
AIPAC, oh, yeah.
I'll just add one more thing about the bridge. We are having some problems with the bridge. It did fail for its test, so KDOT's coming down to do some additional testing, and so we might have to start over on that bridge. So that might be a setback for this project a little bit, but we just found that out, just-
What's the break test?
It was a cylinder test that failed. It only reached 2,800 and was supposed to reach 4,000, so that's an issue. So we are working through that, but that's really the only issue that we've had problems with on this project.
So are we, then we're behind schedule then on this? Or are, is it going to be on, be to open, are we on the schedule?
We're, we're on schedule, even with the-
I know we're, I know we're behind because of the delays and everything, all the, all, yeah.
The overall construction portion is all, we should be able to still meet the construction time that we've got out on.
Okay.
Before school.
All right, that's all I have. Anything else? Not? We're adjourned, 4:25. Rock and roll.